Sorry, here you go. Good evening, everyone. Now, if you could hear me. Welcome to our June 15, 2021 City Council meeting. It is 7:07 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Tony Rodriguez from Calvary Chapel, and Mayor Pro Tem Castellanos will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Sure, thank you.
Our God, our heavenly Father, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight. Amen.
Everybody, please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabataba?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Castellanos?
Here.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Present. City attorneys, are there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
On to presentations.
Testing.
Can I invite Ms. Kim Chrissy, Assistant Principal at Walnut Grove Intermediate School, to the front? So, for 20 years, Achieve 3,000 has been empowering educators and helping them unlock student potential and accelerate learning growth. Now, more than ever, schools and districts need proven solutions that can help them address unfinished learning and prepare students for success. Let us congratulate the following 7th and 8th grade students, but before we go ahead and list them to come down here, if there's anything you'd like to say, please do so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say how proud we are of these students. Typically, students increase their reading likes aisle by 50 to 60 points in a year. These students have tripled or even seven times that growth. And in a year when they've been on the computer for all of their teaching, for them to continue with their work to do this program is remarkable and shows their dedication, and I'm just so proud of them. They're now going to be 8th graders and 9th graders, and I know they're going to be very successful as they move on. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, we'd like to start with Kevin Mayorga. We'll be taking a group photo. Elena Amaya. Zentley Palacios. Liana Herrera Montez. Maya Salama. Italy Coronado. Congratulations. Miranda Cruz. Caitlin Vicario. Carissa Victoria. Anthony Panigawa. Haley Ayala. Mackenzie Z. Odalise Garcia Montez de Sioco. Adam Hagan. Laris Fregoso. So, we have proud parents here. You guys did very wonderful. Anything you'd like to share or say, how you came up to this, or, you know, any little comments or advice you'd like to give to others?
Just try your best.
Obviously, you are here. You got the presentation, you made honors, and that was great. Achieve 3,000, you achieved.
Yeah, just do your best.
I like reading, that's why I did it.
There you go, reading.
Plan ahead. Plan ahead.
Plan ahead.
You should never give up, because if you ever give up, you'll never know what you could have achieved.
Achieve, never give up.
Mine is keep working hard.
Working hard.
Try hard.
Do anything as long as you keep trying.
If you schedule, like, what you're going to do, then you can get it.
Do your best.
Just keep going.
Believe in yourself.
Support.
So, thank you so much, and support is a big thing. So, the city... The city does support you. Your parents are here. Look, the love that you have, they support you, and the residents and everybody else says thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take a group photo, so we can all gather together. Maybe Neil. Go in the middle. Do more reading. So, thank you again. Give them a round of applause. And keep on reading, keep on achieving higher goals, and we hope to see you here again on another time, or maybe you'll be here, leading this chamber. So, thank you, congratulations again. Can I invite Fran Soys Colton to the front? Is she here? This is for the proclamation of gun violence. There you go. The timing of a gun violence awareness day as proposed as the first Friday in June is meaningful as it coincides with the National Wear Orange Weekend. Wear Orange was created in memory of a young girl, Haria Peddleton, who was killed by a gun after performing in Barack Obama's second inauguration parade. Her family wanted to commemorate her life as she was destined for greatness. She loved the color orange, which is the color hunter's wear to be safe. So, they created Wear Orange to occur the first weekend in June with the purpose of spreading gun violence awareness with various activities across the country. So, for that, we'd like to give you a proclamation, but before doing so, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, first of all. Thank you so much. I just want to say, you know, I think it's wonderful. There are a lot of people in this country, in this city, in this state that have been affected by gun violence, thousands of people every year. Their families still mourn, and they may have happened decades ago, but they're still mourning the death of those individuals. It doesn't go away. So, I think it's good to help us to heal as a nation, as a city, and to have a day once a year where we can, you know, remember those individuals. And so, thank you again, and, you know, it's people like the mayors who, and the police departments all over the country that know about violence in their particular districts. And, you know, they're trying to do meaningful things every day to try to curb these things. And so, we appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before moving to oral communication, we have an adjournment. Herman Robert Bob Fass was born in Mountain Lake, Minnesota, on September 25, 1927. Bob played football and basketball while in high school. Bob had many memories of choir class plays in school band. Bob was married to Doris Peters of Mountain Lake from 1948 until her passing in 1993. And I just wanted to let you know that Bob Fass was a city manager here in West Covina for so many years. I believe it's 17 or 14, 14 to 17 years. Bob and Doris had three children. Bob's belief in upward mobility and person's career led him and his family to many wonderful opportunities. Bob then headed to what would be an outstanding career of community service for two communities in California. Bob started as a public service director and assistant city manager for West Covina. His passion for West Covina and its project was a growing community where endless... His work for West Covina then sent him on his upward mobility mantra to the city of Chino as a city manager for four years. The last 26 years, Bob was surrounded by lots of love from family and friends. Bob loved everyone back. He was married to Doris Peters from 1948 until her passing in 1993. He is survived by his three children from that union, six grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. Bob is survived by his wife of 26 years, Odette Jansen Fass of Fairmont, three stepsons who were dear and beloved to Bob, four grandchildren, and two collie dogs, Violet and Halo. So, in that, we'd like to honor in memory of our former city manager, Herman Bob. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to oral communication. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, we have 12 speakers.
12? Okay. Go ahead and proceed.
Our first speaker is Ryan Serrano, followed by John Carson, followed by Bob Ryan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to address the city of West Covina. My name is Ryan Serrano, and I am an Assistant Field Deputy with the Office of Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors Chair, First District Supervisor Hilda Elsalise. I want to provide a brief update on recent actions to help the county open in a safe manner and as well as provide some updates on recent board motions. Today, we mark the full reopening of Los Angeles County in alignment with the state. Restaurants, shopping malls, movie theaters, and most everyday places are now open as normal with no capacity limits or social distancing required. But I ask us to let, to take a moment to acknowledge all the sacrifices it took to get us to this point. We lost over 23,000 residents in Los Angeles County alone. For many, this reopening comes at a time of loss and sorrow. Let's continue to be kind and compassionate towards one another during this time of transition. This pandemic is still very present, which means we are not out of the woods just yet. It is still incredibly important that residents get vaccinated. Today's reopening also marks some changes coming to the county apart from full reopenings of sectors and businesses. As announced during last week's COVID-19 media briefing, all large county-run megapods are now closed. Vaccines will still be widely available at a range of sites, including mobile clinics like the one located at Cameron Park, local pharmacies like CVS, and community clinics like East Valley Community Health, as well as smaller, long-term sites run by the county. The current vaccination rate for residents 16-plus in the city of West Covina, as of June 11, was 69.7%, a great accomplishment with room to improve. This is the home stretch, the home stretch that we have been envisioning for over a year. So, let's make sure every resident gets at least one dose, so we can get to that finish line. You can visit vaccinateLAcounty.com, findmyvaxla.com, or call 833-540-0473 to find a vaccination site near you. I would also like to share, through a motion authored by Supervisor Salise, the county was able to secure funding for the Youth at Work program year-round. Youth at Work prepares underserved youth age 14 to 24 for careers through paid work experience and a comprehensive set of employment, training, and support services provided through the county's network of America's Job Centers of California, otherwise known as the AJCC. The program focuses on serving those with the highest needs, including justice-involved youth, youth experiencing homelessness, foster youth, transition-age youth, and CalWorks youth. Los Angeles County remains committed to providing critical resources for our residents and small businesses as we emerge from this pandemic. Our office can help partner for mobile vaccine units in the community. We have appreciated the current vaccination efforts here in the city of West Covina and would love to continue to ensure the community well-being to enjoy a much-deserved summer. If you have any questions, please contact our East San Gabriel Valley Field Office at Let's get to the finish line together. Thank you again, City Council members.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, for the update. A quick question. The youth program, 14 to 24, because I received that at my work, and it was only youth who lived in the city of LA, this program is for...
For the county at law.
The whole county, including the, well, residents. Can you send us the information? We'd like to make sure the schools get that, so the youth ages 14 to 24 can start their work program.
Sure.
Okay.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield the reminder of my time.
Thank you.
John Carson, followed by Bob Ryan, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm back again. Once again, I'm asking our council to put a vote of no confidence against George Gascón. I have been helping at the recall Gascón signing booths for a few weeks now, and I have to say, the communities have seen enough of Gascón's disastrous directives and are really concerned about the rising crime rates. I encourage everyone to sign the recall. Gascón's policies make no sense and are putting all our lives in danger. His policies are not true reform. We have a DA that is just going easy on criminals, hoping that they will not reoffend. He is not following the law. He is just a DA that refuses to file charges in a lot of cases and going light on criminals. This is our justice system. The police gather the evidence and bring it to the DA for prosecution. The DA is supposed to charge each case based on the law. Gascón is not doing this. It is the prosecutor's job to try each case to the full extent of the law. Gascón is not allowing his prosecutors to do this in most cases. Gascón is removing all enhancements. He is not bringing up prior convictions. That's a major problem, major problem, and not using the death penalty. Simple fact, the more violent criminals that are released early, the chance of everyone being a victim increases dramatically. He violates the Victims' Right Bill. This is a real big one for me, known as Marcy's Law. Zero bail for many cases, including child abuse and domestic violence. This is very dangerous to the victims. They're out on bail, back out in a very, very vulnerable situations in both cases. I urge our council to make a vote of no confidence against George Gascón on behalf of West Covina. I think it's been about a month and a half. I came out here, me and Dave Williams, and we presented this. We need a vote, okay? We need to know how our council feel about this. That's all I have to say. I was prepared, I never know what's three or five, so I wrote three today. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Bob Ryan, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Mike Greenspan.
First of all, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. My name is Bob Ryan. I'm a real victim, not a victim made up by Gascón, not a victim paid by Gascón or George Soros. I'm a victim. My son was murdered, brutally murdered, less than two miles from here. Now, it was a premeditated murder. He shot my son five times in the torso, once in the head. Now, my son's friend was with him. They blew him away because he would have been a witness. Now, the problem is, they did all this, then he took the two boys, he wrapped their body, he carjacked a van. He threw the lady in the street, told her, "I'll kill you if you talk to the police." Just mind you, this is a couple miles from here. Then he picked the bodies, put them in the van, took them out to Victorville in the dirt, and dumped my son like trash, and another boy like trash. We found him eight days later laying in the dirt while somebody was looking for aluminum cans. I'm a real victim. Now, this murderer was a gang member in the East Side Bolins, very prominent gang right down the street. He come into this town all the time. This gang member had many, many prior arrests, many. He used a gun for that. He carjacked. He had everything... And we went to court, and the judge removed the special enhancements and the special circumstances because of Gascón's directives. Now, we went back to court, thank God, for the Marcy's Laws attorney, Steve Cooley, and Kathy Katie. We now have the enhancements and the special circumstances back on our case. The judge said, "I did it the first time because of Gascón's directives." The second, the second time I thought about this was because I studied the case. This case warranted this man to have special circumstances and enhancements on the case. You know, you guys had a council meeting, what, well over a month ago? I don't understand what this... I understand there's going to be a letter written to Gascón. He's had his chance. Steve Cooley had his chance, Sheriff Villanueva had his chance, and Gascón had his chance. Why are we waiting? I mean, it seems like that's too little, too late to send a letter to Gascón. We need to vote. We need, we need to move on with this and, you know, get the vote in. Right now, I think we have, as of last night, either 19 or 20 cities have now voted no confidence. Talking to Steve Cooley today, he has at least 10 more that are on board to sign in the very near future. West Covina needs to get on board and do this. This is our city, and if any of you think this can't happen to your children, believe me, I never thought it could happen to my child. Never once did I anticipate a sheriff coming to my door and saying, "Your son has been murdered." But West Covina is getting very dangerous, along with the rest of Los Angeles County. Gascón is letting very violent people out. These police officers are putting their lives on the line every single day, only, and risking their lives, and then being told, "Oh, well, we're not going to file charges on that. We're going to let them go." It's okay to avoid arrest now. What are we talking about? That's not okay. Trespassing, misdemeanors everywhere are just okay. It's not okay, folks. And if you want to keep this city safe, we need to get this special vote in and let West Covina join us in a no-confidence. These gangs, the East Side Bolins, the North Side Bolins, Almonte Flores, and a couple more of these officers could tell you the others, are here. They're in your town. They are creating havoc. They are nothing more than a domestic terror organization that needs to be dealt with. And we're not going to sit back and let them ruin our lives. We have to step up to the plate and let them know, we cannot put up with this anymore. But please, let's put this to a vote. Let's not wait for Gascón. What, it's not going to do any good. Number one, he's probably never even going to reply to you. But it's time, it's time to put it to a vote. And that's all I ask, is just, please, you got to worry about your children. I'm sure some of you have children. And if you have children, think of your children. Think of what that call would be like. Think of what that call would be like to have that sheriff call you or come to your house. Let's keep West Covina safe. I grew up in West Covina. I went to West Covina High School. I mean, some kids say, "Oh, they really had a school back then?" Yes, they did. I graduated in 1967, and a lot of kids don't believe there was a school, but there was one, believe me. So, I appreciate you letting me speak, and please, let's put this to a vote and have West Covina vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Bill Elliott, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Sharon Anderson.
Good evening, City Council. Gosh, Mr. Ryan, so sorry about your son. West Covina is becoming a very dangerous place, and I agree with everything he just said. You know, I want to touch on something that Mr. Iníquez said in the meeting last time when the sheriff was here, representative for George Gascón. And, you know, this guy reminded us what a favorite son of West Covina he is. He reminded us more than once. "I grew up in West Covina, I'm a local. My dad still lives here," he said, more than once. But when I asked him, "Are you a father?" "Oh, I never discuss my family and my personal business." He's a demonstrable liar. He lied to us right in this chamber, right at this microphone. And I did a little checking on this guy. And I don't know if anybody knows, but he was a former opponent of George Gascón. And apparently, he saw his campaign was doomed, and he joined the Gascón campaign, very likely with the promise of the number-two slot in the district attorney's office, the chief assistant, no, excuse me, the chief deputy district attorney, the number-two man in the department. Okay, well, that's not true either. There is a lateral position, a chief of staff, which is absolutely equal to his. You look at the chart yourself and see, he's not the number-two man. And he's not even the chief assistant district attorney. He's the interim chief district attorney. He's a liar. This was a back-room political deal to give him the title for a while, so he can claim for the rest of his political career that he was the chief assistant, or, excuse me, the chief, such a long title. It's a bunch of bull is what it is. So, he comes here and he lies to us, right to everyone's face. I noticed the sheriff's a very important guy. He showed up. Where was Gascón? West Covina's small potatoes, can't make it. You know, his decisions that he's made to completely ignore misdemeanors is causing the breakdown of our society. And Mr. Ryan is right, West Covina is becoming a dangerous place. Homicides in the street are common now. I hate to see that. I hate to say that, but it's true. You know, in Los Angeles County, the sheriff says he's increasing concealed carry permits because of the dangerous criminals that are being released from prison and causing a threat to every single one of us. And I noticed that his Good Cause Clause hasn't changed though. "Oh, well, if you got a restraining order, somebody's threatening you." Constitutional right doesn't require permission slip from anybody. We should have, we should have, shall issue concealed carry in West Covina like the city council already voted for. I really don't understand what is the delay in that. We've got the sheriffs that's now loosening up these requirements and issuing. He says, "We've issued a thousand permits." In a county of 11 million people, what, a few more judges, a few more DAs, a few more city council types, who knows? Who knows who gets these permits? Because nobody's privy to the list. I've even heard him claim there is no list. We don't really know how many are issued, but it's all intertwined. There are now 15 states that have constitutional carry of concealed weapons for self-protection by law-abiding citizens. What is concealed constitutional carry? Doesn't require a permit. You don't need permission. You have permission, the Second Amendment, the Second Amendment is my permission slip to defend myself and my family, and my home, and my business. And for the sheriff to be boasting about a thousand permits is really a joke. And for the sheriff to be boasting about a thousand permits is really a joke. Uh, fifteen states have constitutional carry now. And you know what? It's not the wild, wild west. As a matter of fact, it's a lot safer than West Covina. Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Sharon Anderson, followed, followed by R. Robinson.
Mike Greenspan, and in the words of Paulie Shore, "I'm back." And, uh, as far as the people who have mentioned recalling Gascon, let me give you three words that are very helpful from North Florida: buy a gun. And after all, I almost moved to metro Atlanta, and the first thing I would have done in Georgia would be get a totter's permit, i.e., a carry permit. And I think a friend of mine in Tennessee has one, and he says it's good for about fourteen states. And if I lived back where my family lives in North Florida, I could spend a Saturday afternoon and, and finish a course and be able to have a permit. Looks like a driver's license. Back then, it was good in fourteen states, might even be fifteen now. But that's not what I came here to talk about. I came, first of all, oh, good, that Broad Hill Flunky is here. When are they gonna open up this city? That's what I wanna ask that stupid deputy of hers. Because it's a dog and pony show. We haven't opened up our cities. It's just a gimmick of the governor so he can stay in office. That's all it is. It's a dog and pony show. I'm here to talk about, I'm tired of Minneapolis getting all the publicity about the chokehold. Because right here in L.A., L.A. County, and the city especially, we have plenty of chokeholders. After all, we got the Lakers from Minneapolis, we got chokeholders just like Minneapolis. And we got this guy, Chokehold Joe, Joe Bustaino. Well, how did he get there? Well, first of all, there is this JAP, and it's, that's the acronym for Jewish-American princess named Jane Harmon, who is in Congress. Princess Jane Harmon. And she got one of those cushy jobs at a foundation, so they had to have an election. Well, who got elected? Hunt Han from the Board of Supervisors. Yes, Kenny Han's daughter, Imbo daughter. And so then they had to have an election in L.A. because she was on the city council, the fifteenth district. So, they had a special election. And a racist, white, Republican pig, Chokehold Joe. And Chokehold Joe is a friend of a, of a part-time pig from Los Angeles who just went to federal prison, Mitchell Englander, part of a corruption scandal. So, yes, part of me, even though I'm not a Democrat or a Republican, I'm a nonpartisan, yes, in L.A., I'm going to play the Democrat card because I wanna see Chokehold Joe's butt kicked in the next election. After all, when he goes through the spots of districts like eight, nine, and ten, I would wanna see people like George Wallace, Strom Thurmond, Lester Maddox, David Duke, and Opal Fobbis get more votes than that racist, white, Republican pig, Chokehold Joe. I'm just sick and tired of people like him. We don't need him, and it's time to do something about it. Now, I wanna take a, a little bit of time and, and thank Mr. Armando Herman. Why? Because Mr. Armando Herman always mentions court cases. But he makes me do the heavy legal lifting. "Oh, what do you mean, Greenspan? What's heavy legal lifting?" Well, he never cites the most important case, City of Los Angeles versus Armando Herman. Now, there's three different ones. One's from the faggot deputy city attorney, Streffen Fobble. And there was a thing about that case, Judge Jennifer Cops, you've got to read the transcript. She not only gave him permission to go to the council meetings, which the city of L.A. tried to ban Mr. Herman, but also allowed him to wear what he wants to wear to the council meeting. So, in honor of Mr. Herman doing that and the case, the judge ruled he could wear a swastika. So, here, folks, and this is for Englander, Englander and the way he treated me. And remember, since I got another one, she, an unknown person, not Judge Cops, she got her thrill on top of Katie Hill, who likes to talk about being a bisexual, the former member of Congress. Thank you.
Sharon Anderson, followed by R. Robinson, followed by George Ogden.
Good evening, everyone. I won't be so, whatever. I received in the mail this letter, and it was from City of West Covina Compliance Division, Cedar Avenue, Fresno, California. So, I figured I would, it was some kind of scam or something. And then, so I went up to, uh, City Hall and went to a few places around there. And it says, "Dear property owner, HDL Companies has been retained by the City of West Covina to assist business and property owners in becoming compliant with the City Municipal Code as it relates to business taxes." So, what it boils down to is I have a house here that I rent. It's a single-story house rented by one family. So, they were telling me that I needed a business license. But in, I looked through all the municipal codes. There was three or four people up in City Hall that really, really tried to help me also. And we all looked through everything. And so then, couldn't find anything saying that I needed a business license for one house, single-story, by one person, one family. She's a single mother with a child. Well, child's twenty-six now, but, um, so I didn't wanna fill out anything 'cause I'm not sure, and I've never heard of having a business license for one rental property. And that substitute, I'm retired, it substitutes, you know, my income 'cause I don't make that much in retirement. And not only that, but then the guy said, and I believe his name was Mark from HDL, said, "Well, we can go back three years and fine you for those three years, also for not having a license." And I'm thinking, "Well, I never, how would I know?" And then he also stated something that they now consider this a, an apartment building. Well, I don't have a crystal ball, so I'm not sure how he considers this a rental. I mean, an apartment. Like I say, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, one-story house. And nobody's able to find out anything for me, so that's why I'm here. I don't wanna send out anything to anybody for my information. I mean, if I have to, I will apply. You know, I'm not disputing that. But I just think that somebody needs to contact HDL and find out why they are targeting. And I know they also said that one other person came in to complain about this, and I don't know what to do. I'm looking for help because the only thing I get is, from HDL, is, "You should have known, and we're allowed to go back three, for three years." And I said, and I wanted to tell them, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I didn't know that my one-story house was an apartment building. So...
I just wanted to make sure-
I guess you guys can't make anything.
No, 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 um, we usually allow everybody to finish the five minutes, but, um, that's okay, if you had more to say, you can continue.
Oh, no, I can't think of anything.
But definitely, oh, they're giving you a card. Um, you can send all your information. We're gonna definitely look into that. City staff will look into that, and then I also like to see the municipal code, and then we'll address this because I did-
There is no municipal, I-
Oh, there is no municipal code? Okay, but-
I, I looked, and I-
Oh, okay.
And I looked. Otherwise, I would have been more than happy to.
After finish, we will have City Manager to answer.
Okay, I'll, I'll call him. But I also wanna say one more thing is, let's recall George.
Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed, followed by George Ogden, followed by Herman.
Good evening, Council. Bill Robinson, resident. Contrary to Resolution, uh, number seventy-two on the agenda tonight, uh, I'd like to echo the speaker number one. The state of emergency needs to stop right now. Uh, West Covina residents don't like it. Uh, there's no justification and no evidence exists to, to continue it. Uh, the flu season is between December and April. It ended six weeks ago. There's no evidence to continue the, the L.A. County emergency, uh, in West Covina. We don't like living, I, I don't like living under, for one, I don't like living under martial law. But, um, but this has become a, a phony emergency. The, uh, the inventor of PCR testing, a PCR, a polymerous chain reaction, that was what drove this pandemic worldwide, and it can't be used for diagnosis. A positive co, uh, PCR test rarely progresses to a, a, a case of the flu. So, uh, the whole emergency is, is based on a fraud. Uh, the vaccine is not a vaccine. It's a, it's a messenger RNA. The, the Moderna and the Pfizer are, uh, gene therapy. And, uh, in the next five or ten years, we may develop evidence that, uh, that the RNA quote "vaccine" could disrupt our natural DNA, which, nobody wants that. It's a, it's a, uh, uh, have you ever heard of peanut allergies? It's a thing called, um, paradoxical immune enhancement. So, if the vaccine screws up your immune system and you're exposed, uh, years later to the wild, uh, virus, your immune system goes crazy. And anyway, uh, we're all guinea pigs, and, uh, uh, the vaccine and the hysterica, uh, the hysteria, uh, in a non-election year, I've said this before, uh, the Big Pharma, uh, provides, uh, seventy percent of the ad revenue of our major media. Uh, so they control the content. Anyway, I'm in favor of, uh, or contrary to the resolution of, uh, of, uh, stopping, stopping the, uh, local, uh, emergency in West Covina. So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll yield back the rest of my time. But since there's no evidence to continue, uh, the emergency, I think if, if you, uh, pass the resolution, uh, uh, and continue the emergency, that shows bad judgment. Thank you.
George Ogden, followed by Herman, followed by Jim Grivage.
Good evening, members of council, city staff. I, I came here to support, uh, the letter of no confidence, and we're pretty sure that we have a four-on-one council on that. Quit smiling over there. You know how you feel. You know, I wanted to touch base on something, okay? Uh, you talked about a little history that really didn't pertain to West Covina, but it's still an important piece of history. It probably didn't belong at this business meeting, but it's still history, the Tulsa riots. And you fall short of why it all happened. A nineteen-year-old young man that was accused of assaulting a seventeen-year-old girl. And there was a call for justice by a large quantity of people surrounding the jail. And there were some, in a affluent black neighborhood, seventy-five people from that black neighborhood came to that jail armed. And there was, uh, a man by the name of, I think his last name was Mann, that was waving around a weapon. And an old man tried to defuse it, and he shot him. The end result of that was ten white people were killed, and two black people were killed. This enraged that little piece of history into a nightmare. The white community went in and annihilated that entire neighborhood. There were a lot of people killed on both sides. So, and I think, in my opinion, it would have been cool if you would have talked about the whole thing. But no violence should be coming about on something like this. I agree with, it was just totally, totally, totally wrong. So, anyway, I, I just wanted to share that because some of the people aren't sure of why it happened. This gives them a little insight. So, people should take a look at the history because what you were talking about was an important element of the history of the United States. Anyway, with that being said, let me go on to something that Bill Elliott's always after, is concealed weapons or open carries. Sheriff Villanueva was here, and he did state that he put together a, a larger team to process, you know, firearms permission, et cetera. I think since Chief Alan Sill, at least since then, there is no weapons that have been put out there with a permit to the citizens. And I think we still carry that same policy here. However, the chief here in this city can't issue permits, concealed weapon permits. I would like to see, again, that our city have that opportunity to first do this. Couple of reasons. Number one, we can keep track of those individuals that do have weapons. And if a police officer pulls somebody over, it'll show up on a ten-twenty-eight, ten-twenty-nine, which wants to warrant that this guy may be carrying a concealed weapon with him and he's permitted. We have control. We can also charge accordingly. Not gonna make a lot of revenue here. But if not, they're gonna bypass our chief, and they're gonna go straight to Villanueva's office. And he's got a larger crowd of people over there to process all of this stuff. I feel that we need to have people out there to be able to protect ourselves, to protect our neighbors, and in fact, protect our own police officers. Because sometimes they can't do it alone. They get stuck in a situation. And you can go on YouTube and see time and time again where a citizen has come up and saved the life of a police officer. Okay? I would really like to see that being reconsidered and to move forward that way. And in my case, many of you know what I do. You know some of the things that I have, and you know what it takes to get those things. I'm afraid to go to the bank. I can't process the funds that come out of the facility that I represent because I just feel it's unsafe. I have to go with at least two people. I've had a girl, just because I didn't support who she supported for governor, come out here and threaten me. I had to have the mayor from Covina call me and say she's added again, only to find her in the parking lot of the VFW scarring up one of my cars. I was shocked to see her there. That's, you know, that's Lauren Becker. I'm not ashamed to say who it is. So, I try to stop her, she jumps in her pickup truck, and she tries to run me down, not once, but twice. She drives out. But good for her. So, I feel that I'm compromised. There's people out here that are not people that we need out here because they're being released from prison early. We need to protect ourselves. The citizens need to protect themselves. I mean, here's a guy here, Second Amendment man, Second Amendment man. I know that because they talk about it often, and I am too. So, I'm gonna go ahead and take off because my time is up. And I wanna thank you very much, and sir, my condolences to you. Thank you very much.
Herman, followed by Jim Grivage, followed by John Schumaker.
So, ladies and gentlemen of the arena of West Covina, in my hands are the dockets that I had transferred over by certified mail to the FBI. In regard to the hate crime committed here in West Covina against me, an individual who I allege, the City of West Covina- an individual who I allege the city of West Covina lacks integrity. And what do I mean by that? Well, this is what I submitted to the Federal Bureau of Investigation at 11,000 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, 90024, on June 2nd. In anticipation of their investigation, warning, they're coming for you. Regarding a hate crime at City Hall during a meeting time, Mr. Tony Wu and company, I submitted paperwork of experiencing the risk of injury occupied with unnecessary use of threats and emotional distress while at a public meeting, like some of you may feel challenged by the words of the police. However, when you use that type of method of emotional distress to community and community members in a public hearing, it shows that you are alienating yourselves as civilians. And you're not here, nor are you here to protect any citizen, as you heard from the gentleman in a blue shirt who spoke about killings and threats and the violence here in West Covina. So what are you doing about it, mayor? Well, the result of intimidation and retaliation is not going to work. I'm still here. You cut my tires. You busted my windows. You damaged my vehicle. And now someone is going to be investigated. Especially someone who followed me in their black, brand-new Corvette and challenged me here at the podium, the arena in which I control for five minutes. And though most of you saw today, the mayor wore this red, white, and blue on her mouth, but yes, she suppresses our free speech. She attacks our First Amendment, our Fourth Amendment, our Second Amendment, our Fourteenth Amendment, and our California Constitution, and the Constitutional Bill of Rights in which all of us, as a black person, would say, I have legal rights to say what the fuck I believe. So again, have no fear. Words don't create harm. It's what you do physically, what you did here in West Covina in the parking lot when, one, there is no public safety available; two, you have no cameras on all the parking lots to protect us; three, you have inadequate lighting; four, you need to resurface your goddamn fucking streets out there because people slip and fall and trip. Am I right or wrong? Thank you. Thank you. You see, I like it when people engage in my participation because it reflects the criminal corruption of those involved. And as I mentioned before, God hates homosexuals. It's protected speech. Romans, Chapter 1, 26 through 27. Snyder versus Phelps, 562 U.S., 433. Offensive, but outrageous. Well, no. Sodom and Gomorrah. Here are the 10 pages of Sodom and Gomorrah for you to put into the record, Mr. Attorney. Put into the record, Mr. Administrator, that men don't fuck children. Police don't fuck cadets. And anyone involved...
Language, mic is off. He has his time. Mic is off on the YouTube, though. Just letting you know, I turned that mic off. But you have your five-minute right. I told you before, language. Continue, order, please. Order. He has 19 seconds. Next.
Jim Grivitch, followed by John Schumaker, followed by Shazad Shazir. Please place him in the basket.
Damn. Mask back on. I don't want to offend anybody like the mayor up there. Where's Hilda Solis, by the way?
Next, please. You can, you step off to the side.
Where is Hilda Solis? Why hasn't she opened up the board supervisors?
You're more than welcome to talk to her in the office, her office. Call her office.
I'm not going to call her office.
The black one that you put your speaker card in, please.
As I said before, language. But anyways, go ahead, continue, please. You have five minutes.
I'd like to change the subject.
Thank you.
On your agenda tonight, you're being asked to adopt the budget for this year. If I were you, I would have misgivings about adopting this budget as is. As far as I know, it's the first budget in the history of West Covina, where the city council will be deliberately adopting deficit spending, spending more money than you're taking in. I think that is so serious that I'm recommending that you amend the resolution to adopt the budget to include the following language. And I provided a copy of what I'm reading to you. By September 2021, the city manager shall submit to the city council such budget adjustments as necessary to either increase revenue or decrease expenditures in order to bring overall general funding expenditures to a level not to exceed projected general fund revenue. The reasons for this amendment are essentially two. It is against your own policies. This council adopted budget policies that stated rather directly that expenditures, expenditures would not increase, I'm sorry, I'm being...
That's okay, you can continue.
That you adopted a policy that said you would not adopt a budget where expenditures exceeded revenue. And at a minimum, I think you have to suspend your own policy to do this budget as is. But I think the better remedy is to adjust the budget so that it is in balance. The second issue is that this budget violates both the spirit and the letter of the state audit that found that the city has a pattern and practice of deficit spending, which if continued will lead to bankruptcy or insolvency. The, also, the city adopted, you, the council, adopted a fiscal recovery plan that included monitoring your expenditures to make sure that you would not do deficit spending. Yet you're deliberately doing it with adoption of this budget. And I don't think the state auditor will feel kindly about deliberate action to violate your own fiscal recovery plan. This is not, this issue is not new. It's been going on for years, well before this council took office. But this council is continuing the pattern and the practice, and that's what's disturbing me. And, and I'm just going to give you some examples of things that the city has done that perhaps you weren't even aware were continuing the pattern and practice. One is when the city borrowed $210 million, an enormous amount of money. And it was stated that it would be used to pay off CalPERS to retire the unfunded liability for pensions. Well, that part was true. But there was also another $10 million or $9 million, I've seen both numbers, left over, that could be used to replenish the reserves. And that was what was stated at the time it happened, when we actually sold the bonds, not before we sold the bonds. And that money then was promptly used to pay for day-to-day operations. If you know anything at all about money, money, you don't borrow money to pay for your day-to-day expenses. You don't use your MasterCard to pay for your Visa card. You just, that's terrible money management. And that's, that's what the city did with $10 million. And it's really concerning. That just happened. That was only a couple of months ago. And I, I'm really concerned. I, I've been doing this now for, this is six years. And I just don't want to see my city go down. That's all it is. Thank you.
John Schumaker, followed by Shazad Shazir,
I'm trying to figure out how or what the rules are for our city. In the past, and I've been coming to council meetings for 20-plus years, you know, you never had people who were speaking for the council or were appointed by the council or somehow were associated with the council member get up here and do things like... And I want to know if you think this is appropriate. You know, one person attacked Peter, is his last name Diem? His grandparents and made the remark about if it wasn't for his white grandfather having sex with his grandmother, he'd be in a rice paddy in Vietnam. Do you think that's appropriate language? I think it's time that you, as a council, say, no, it isn't. You know, is it appropriate for, you know, somebody related to a council member to refer to women on Facebook as honey and say, why don't you show your face at a council meeting? Is it appropriate for a member of the public in the last two meetings to almost have the police arrest him because he verbally assaulted people, tried to intimidate people? And with the sheriff here, wouldn't it shut up and give the mic back? That shows a lack of respect to the mayor. Definitely shows no respect to the person's wife who sits on this council. I'm also trying to figure out when it became appropriate for a commissioner to call a sitting council member on two occasions, a liar. Flat lie. I know at least two of you have terminated commissioners for doing a lot less than that, just disagreeing with you. You know, or, or because they were making it hard for you to work with other council members because of the way they were saying things. But you can have, you can have a planning commissioner call a sitting council member a liar, telling him that he's hiding his race, that he's really a Middle Easterner. Isn't that a code word for terrorist? Lying about his ethnic background. Well, I guess that is a little bit different than lying that, you know, what was it? I'm Hispanic, but I don't think like they do. How does a Hispanic think? Right, just like everybody else. Hiding his Middle Eastern background. You know, when people call him on it, constantly threatens to sue them. Planning commissioner who sends an email out using his title as a commissioner. Now, I wonder, I'm working at a business, and I get an email from a planning commissioner with his title on it, and I'm going, you know, sometime in the next six months, I'm going to be going before that commission because I need to get a variance approved for this building I'm putting in or my store or something along those lines. Hmm, I better react. Or I might have to react. I'm just confused as to what the criteria is anymore. You know, nothing is being said. If, you know, a person, you know, it was, when I believe it was Angie Gilliam who said a certain person who's a commissioner has a disability and said what part of the disability can do. And she was attacked for how dare they say something like that. But what does your ethnic background have anything to do with you? I understand you were born in the United States, right? You're an American. That's all, that's all it is to me. I don't care where your parents came from. You know, that type of thing. You know, puts things out on Facebook about, you know, when there's a council meeting, let the fireworks begin. What the fireworks are, are you talking about? I thought it was kind of odd, you know, the same person who was speaking, all of a sudden starts ripping into the sheriff again. I guess his request for a CCW got shot down. So now he's on the no-fly list. Yeah. I just don't get it. You know, what is the criteria anymore? You guys are supposed to set it. You know, I know you can't stop people from saying things. But when you have certain, you know, you can at least repudiate it. Say, I don't agree with that. So hopefully you will. Thank you.
I feel bad for you guys. I agree with John. The quorum here is really ridiculous. I hate coming to these council meetings and hearing them on TV because it's just ridiculous. I don't, I know you guys feel very tied in terms of what you can do about this problem. But I feel like everything that's written here in terms of the decorum is not being followed. So I beg you guys to put your heads together and see how you can manage with the sheriff here. Not sheriff, I'm sorry. The police people. To rein in some of this ridiculousness and then putting people down and being very disrespectful to everybody. I really resent that. Okay, well, that's not why I came to talk, but I just had to react to that. I want to thank, actually, the mayor and the city council for proclaiming the first Friday in January, I mean, in June, as gun violence awareness. I really appreciate your thoughts about that. We have an epidemic in this country, and it is not just COVID. The number of gun sales increased dramatically during COVID. Police are seeing a shocking increase in the number of shooting incidents in all jurisdictions. In LA County alone, gun incidents rose by 88% during the same time period as last year. In fact, Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. This is very disturbing to me as a resident, particularly when I see its devastating impact on the lives of families whose loved ones were killed, as well as those who were fortunate to live that continue with the trauma of having been shot at and injured. Your proclamation acknowledges the importance of this issue and the need to remember those who've been impacted by gun trauma. Thank you for showing that you care about the safety of our community. And I hope we can do even more. Bring about sensible, evidence-based solutions to this uniquely American... One more item, agenda item number 18. I do support the mayor's request for a measured response to the request of citizens about Gascon recall. Appreciate that. I think it's very reasoned. Let's get the facts. So I really appreciate that, and I support that. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council tonight. My name is Karen Roseberry. I am a concerned citizen of Los Angeles County, and I am here to address the agenda item 18. I greatly appreciate your willingness to address many of the concerns that have been raised to the council about the actions that District Attorney Gascon is taking. And I actually would hope and ask that your letter might go further and stronger in the proclamation that is being made. I took the opportunity to read it, and it addresses several of the directives that have been of concern. And it is a great start. But the reality is, is that as council members, we rely on you to serve as a check and a balance when another elected official may be acting far beyond the scope of their authority. And that is precisely what we have taking place with the District Attorney of Los Angeles right now. He is acting as a legislator rather than as the district attorney. He is acting as a legislator rather than as the district attorney. He came into office, he swore to uphold the law, and he has begun to disregard that very law that he swore to uphold. He is disregarding numerous misdemeanor crimes, not looking at the evidence of each case, but simply stating that these crimes are not going to be prosecuted, and laid out a directive in which those crimes would not be prosecuted. He's disregarded the will of the voters in the very same election in which he was elected. Voters asked to have bail reinstated, and they did so at a higher threshold than he was elected by. And yet, that also was disregarded in his directives. He has dismissed and disregarded sentencing requirements that have been passed by the California State Legislature and have been upheld by voters in this very same state. And now we are faced with, how do we deal with this? There is a recall underway, and your actions don't necessarily need to speak specifically to that. You certainly, as individual council members, would be invited to, whether it's to sign or to speak however you feel about that. But what is important and what is imperative is that we do have an opportunity to exercise a check and a balance when any elected official goes beyond the scope of their authority. And that is precisely what we are seeing. And so we already have 19 other cities who have taken up this matter and have voted no confidence in Gascon. And I would implore West Covina to actually do the same and to take this letter and use it as a stepping stone to go further and express that what is happening is not acceptable and that you are going to protect your residents, you're going to protect your guests and visitors within this city, and you're going to require that the law be upheld throughout Los Angeles County, and certainly within West Covina, for where you are responsible for the residents and the citizens who are here. We have cases where victims have been dismissed. We have cases where the law is simply just being disregarded. And for these things, we really do rely on other elected officials who can express with their voice and their authority and their power in the same way that Gascon is trying to use his to say that he's an elected official and cannot be checked until the next election. And that is simply false. There are ways to hold him accountable. And so humbly, come before you now to use your authority as elected officials to act in this way and to serve as that check and that balance. And I thank you very much for your time and for all that you have put up with here tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, we have no more speakers.
So, City Manager, may you please respond to all the public comment concerns?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will do my best to respond first by thanking all of the speakers for taking the time to be here tonight and share their opinions. We had six speakers tonight address the question of the District Attorney and his policies, and several of them as well as to the recall campaign. I would note for the council and the public that we do have an agenda item tonight that speaks in what I hope is a direct and professional and respectful way as to the mayor and the council's position about those policies, and that'll be taken up later in your agenda tonight. Ms. Anderson asked about business licensing. Under the city municipal code, a business license is required for residential rentals. And I gave her my business card, and I'll follow up with her to give her the specifics as to where those regulations can be found in the city municipal code. We had one speaker, Mr. Robinson, talk about the state of emergency. This is an ongoing pandemic, and the state of local emergency allows West Covina to access state assets and to suspend regulations. It also allows the city to easily access state and federal funds. I'd like to cite a couple specific examples. One of the regulations during the pandemic that we have suspended, or several of them, related to our desire to allow the restaurants to operate outdoors, something our zoning ordinance wouldn't normally allow. But once that order concludes, we're going to have to talk about how that gets sunsetted. Some communities have begun that. I think it's still appropriate that we allow that, but that's going to return to the council as a policy decision. About agreements that are enacted during this time, we had one come up today, I believe the council is aware of, pertaining to our mass point of distribution for the vaccine at one of the city facilities. We're working with one of our partners on a revision to an agreement we have that'll allow us to continue that service and to modify it slightly based on COVID positivity rates and upon community need. It's the kind of contract that I think everyone in this room, I believe, and certainly everyone on this city council would support. So it's the kind of action that we are taking judiciously and, I hope, reasonably through the pandemic. So when that comes up on your agenda tonight, I would continue to recommend you do it, as are all the cities that I'm aware of and as is the state of California itself. Mr. Grivich spoke again regarding his budget concerns. I would thank him for coming to both of our budget town hall meetings and for his diligence on these budget issues. We're going to present the city's budget for the fiscal year '21-'22 later this evening. It's basically a rollover budget that does keep services intact, and it does recommend that we use some reserves and some Recovery Act funds that are available to us to keep operations moving forward. But we'll address those issues when we get to the budget presentation. A couple speakers talked about rules of decorum and civility. Couldn't agree more, and I would welcome a community conversation around ways that we, as a community, could do better in that area. I think that's all I have this evening in response to comments.
Regarding the business license, I received a couple of emails and phone calls. And for me to live in West Covina 31 years, I even don't know if this call... You guys might assume the business license is for business. So now if we go to residential property and for the single, okay, ownership to go to, okay, and business license. So I want to see, okay, let's call this, okay, when we have a call in this. Okay, so we want to make sure business cannot, okay, they don't pay their fair share. But at this meantime, we don't want to create a burden to our residents in West Covina if they have one additional home they lease to their family or this and that. Now, how about they lease out to ADU? We need to get the business license for that. So I want to make sure we don't go too much, okay, into the people's pocket rather than go to the business. The business has to pay, but not necessarily for our residential, especially for our residents, especially the lady talking about the fixed income, okay? And we are going to trace back to three years, four years. I think that's too much. So I think maybe we can set up, okay, an agenda to look into that issue, okay? And I don't know, the coordinate is from the city, is from the city, right? So maybe we can look into it. And again, I have no idea, okay, let residential rental property have a business license. Okay, so maybe I'm wrong, so I just want to make sure we have the coordinate in place. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, if I may respond. I will certainly agendize that topic for your review of the facts of it. It's a longstanding ordinance adopted by a council which way preceded any of you holding this office. But we'll bring that back on your agenda so you could take a look at it. Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. For our City Manager's report.
We do have a brief report tonight. First, under the general heading of the city is reopening for community activities and events. We're pleased to announce that we've got a lineup of summer concerts that'll be held on Saturday evenings, and the dates are listed here on this slide. But we are very happy to be back in the parks and recreation business. We're going to have an opening of the Sportsplex and a very, I think, appropriate Independence Day celebration at the Sportsplex on Saturday, July 3, in the afternoon. We'll have details available about that on the city website. Sportsplex is soon available for rentals, so people can call our community services staff and get information about how they can sign up to rent that facility. A number of repairs are underway there, and we're hoping to get it shipshape in time for summer use. Wanted to give just a brief legislative update. The city has some legislation that we are the sponsor of, being carried in partnership by our state Assemblymember and state Senator, the Rubio team. SB 431 pertains to the city's landscaping maintenance districts and frees up expenditure, the reins of eligible expenditure activities for the city's LMDs. That bill passed out of the Assembly Local Government Committee last week unanimously, and it'll go on to the floor of the Assembly, and I think it's likely to get approved. Things are going very well with that bill. The second thing I wanted to make mention of is we were given preliminary approval of $3 million to do some betterments on Azusa Avenue in the area of traffic flow signal synchronization and handicapped accessibility. The Congresswoman, Grace Napolitano, called. I spoke with her at some length. She sends her regards to the council and to the community, but we're very appreciative of her efforts. We've got some conversation that will likely occur tonight under the heading of the budget regarding graffiti removal. There was a nice article in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune that highlighted some of the efforts, and we're going to continue to focus on that problem. It's a picture of Barbara Green in use. And we're well underway with the Gentry Brothers contract. It's about $2 million worth of asphalt being done in keeping with the city's pavement management program. So we're working our way through the city based on that pavement management program, and we're getting a good, well-inspected, well-delivered paving job this year. Our one contract for the coming year is expected to be underway in August. So the annual paving programs are proceeding out of the CIP program list pretty deliberately and directly. One of the items I wanted to make mention of, there's an item on your agenda tonight. Sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. We're asking, and it's part of your agenda tonight, for some budget authority to proceed with repairs at Fire Station 4. It's so badly rutted back there that pretty quickly there'll be no asphalt at all, just be a pothole. But this is the area through which the pumper engine, the ladder truck, the rescue ambulance returning to quarters have to traverse this. It's not to standard we want to get it so. There's another picture of some improvements while I was at Fire Station 4. I grabbed a picture of this. We've got now proper gear grids, the lockers, open-air lockers with ventilation in that room, so that their turnouts have a place to hang and not just be stuffed in an enclosed closet. This helps us with OSHA compliance. Wanted to make mention of an item that occurred, a matter that occurred on Friday. Our quint, which is the city's ladder truck that serves multiple purposes. It only has a ladder and serves as the department's toolbox, but it also carries about 300 gallons of water. Our city quint had to be pulled out of service because of problems with the transmission. We had hoped to be better managing our rolling stock, and we're recommending as part of their Federal Recovery Act program monies the purchase of two pumper engines and a ladder truck or a quint. Because ours had to be taken out of service because we had one, had immediate need of one, our fire chief did a good job and made some emergency arrangements for us to, with an agreement, borrow one from an adjacent city, Laverne. People might wonder, why is a Laverne ladder truck rolling our streets with West Covina firefighters on it? It's because ours is in for some repairs which weren't scheduled, were contemplated, and we're really appreciative that they helped us out. I'll be bringing that agreement on your next council agenda for ratification, but I signed it because we had an immediate pressing need of it last Friday. Animal control services are, as council has approved, soon to commence with LA County. So people have been asking, we get some inquiries at City Hall, "Where do I license my dog?" And the short answer is, we're going to be using the LA County Animal Care and Control in Baldwin Park. And so that's where you get your license purchased and arranged for. I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
You, to consent calendar. Counselors, anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10.
Number 12.
Yeah, number three.
So it's 3, 9, oh, 3, 8, 9, 10, and 12. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items 1 through 14, with the exception of 3, 8, 9, 10, and 12?
Mayor, may I have item 11 just be pulled off your calendar tonight, referred back to staff? No action, no council action on that one this evening?
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Okay, on to item number three, Councilman Tabatabai.
I just have one question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So obviously, some residents are wondering when they should anticipate the local emergency ending. So are we anticipating the end of the local emergency to coincide with the governor ending the state of emergency? Is that kind of the standard we're looking at?
Through the chair, yes. I think states of emergency routinely and frequently extend past the immediate crisis. I know of no city which has shut theirs down, and I think it's likely that the logical time to do that would be when the governor concludes it. It would cease the governor's ability to access federal funds, and we're accessing not only federal, but also federal and state. But I think that's what makes sense. In the meantime, we'll continue to report to council as to any actions that are taken under that order and bring to you any contracts for your review and ratification.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, I have a motion by Councilmember Tabatabai and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Castellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. On to agenda item number eight by Councilman Wu.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Okay. On the EMS education, continued education, so maybe explanation, we are going to contract with a university for $60,000 and for five years, how many people utilize this continued education, okay? And how much per person, and we have five years. So totally $60,000, maybe can give some explanation? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, citizen, staff. Can you repeat the question, Councilman Wu, please?
Can you explain, okay, I know you have EMS education to contract with a university for this continued education for EMS. So how much per cost per person, and the $60,000, how many, okay, person will be continued to use this, okay, program?
So it's roughly $60,000 a year, and it's every single member of the fire department has to keep up their continued education, no matter what classification they are, an EMT or a paramedic. We are required to have continued education, and this training is done through UCLA.
So no matter is firefighters or firefighter, okay, paramedic, they all have to take the class?
Every single member has to have this training, annual training.
So how many hours for them to utilize this training?
It's 48 hours every two years to recertify for your accreditation or licensure, depending if you're an EMT or a paramedic. And it's done two times a month. We have an in-house person that comes in, Joanna Corbett. We actually honored her a couple weeks ago on Nurses Week. She comes in and teaches all the members their continued education. She also keeps up with our quality assurance and our quality evaluation of our services, and also keeps up our training and skills.
So basically, train, come to our station to train the firefighters and the person to have the 40 hours training to get a certificate to recertify?
That's correct. She's required, there are certain parameters we're required to do as... it's states in there that we're supposed to require to do for the state.
So for my license, okay, every four years I need to do it for the mortgage license yearly? So for the paramedic or for the firefighter, how often they have to do this recertification?
It's every two years.
Every two years?
Two years.
Okay, I got it. So, so, okay, okay, thank you so much, Chief.
If we're paying this annually but they're only taking it every two years, why are we paying this as an annual fee instead of a biannual fee?
Because not everybody, not everybody is on the same schedule. Some are in January, some are February. Everybody in the whole department has different times that they recertify. But we're required to have the education that takes place every month to keep everybody up to par. Not only is it for our continued education, she also does our quality assurance, evaluates our program. Like currently right now, we're being audited. We get audited once a year by the county to make sure our program's correct. The person assigned to us through UCLA does all that, goes through all our reports, how we call the hospital, when they go to all the tape reviews, they do everything to make sure we're doing everything proper through the county.
So she comes every single month and that doesn't change the, this fee is a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate.
This fee? If the state and county mandates it, is there a way that the state and county at least pays for these fees since I know city's paying for our staff to attend these trainings?
No, they, they're mandated if we want to provide EMS services. If we want to have EMTs, if we want to have paramedics, this is requirement to have that, to have an organization, have a fire department that services the community by delivering basic life support and advanced life support. There's certain things we have to do.
So they don't cover?
They don't cover it. They say if you want to be a paramedic in LA County, you want to be accredited in LA County and be licensed through the state of California, here's what you have to do a paramedic, you have to have 48 hours. West Covina Fire Department, if you want to provide these services, here's the things you have to do and solicit them.
Okay, thank you.
Move the motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Letty Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. So on to item, agenda item number nine, pulled by Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason why I pulled this is because I was wondering if we have to spend over $252,000 to repave or to fix the parking or have an improvement done on Station 4. The reason why I say that is because I was watching the budget town hall meeting and during this meeting, our committee member, Mr. Grebich, made a comment or implied a proposal that this station may be one of those that may be browned out to control the overtime. So I'm just wondering if this is a need, if this is one of the stations that may be browned out?
So Station 4, this project is part of the CIP project, it's already approved by you guys to do the repairs to the fire station. It's already, the money has already been allocated for it. The city even engineers and the fire department worked together immensely to figure out what we can do and cut costs to get this done. And they have, they've had done extensive engineering of how we can save money in repairing this project. We found out that originally when the station was built, the as-built actually had concrete that was supposed to be laid there. For some reason, it wasn't done. And the portions that weren't supposed to be concrete were supposed to have roughly eight inches of asphalt and in those areas, there's three inches of asphalt. This has been re-asphalated and mixed and patched and done for many, many years as long as the fire station's been there. And engineers are saying in need of get it done correctly because our engines are damaging it and we're going to have more costs for the engines, going to get broke and have to fix that. In regards to what you're saying, if it's browned out, which we're still going to have service in that fire department, we want to keep, we're going to have resources there. Browning out the apartment has nothing to do with having to repair this and keep our fire engines on the road.
I guess I'm just concerned about spending money that later on, we won't have that station. That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, maybe city manager can answer that?
Through the chair. Mayor and council, I think under any scenario, we're going to need all five stations to be operational. We're going to continue to figure out standards of coverage and which rolling stock goes in which station and which shift, et cetera. But in any case, under any scenario, we have to get our fire stations to physical standard. At Fire Station 4, there's some metal bracing that was put in when the entry doors at the apparatus bay were put in, they would just cut the bricks and left them hanging, more or less. Well, we use steel reinforcement there. There's some other improvements that are necessary inside to get things to standard. We've got to get the out-of-date, worn-out floor coverings replaced with a hospital-grade linoleum, a marmolium, because the guys can come in there with blood-based pathogens on their boots or whatever. So we got to get something that can be sanitized and cleaned. Some of the carpet is not just threadbare, it's completely worn out. We've got some things that have to be done in that kitchen, which is not just nice to have, it's essential to have because somebody's living there 365 days a year. So I think all of these repairs are appropriate and necessary. We're just trying to get facilities to standard. So I would recommend this parking lot repair as part of that overall program of facilities that we're trying to get to par.
I see. Okay, well, I just wondered if it would be wise to put this kind of money into the station if something were to happen in the future, in the near future? I don't know. But that's what my concern is.
Yeah.
Take you back on to city manager, I don't think we have any intention to not have resources at any of the fire stations ever. We have a covered, standard of coverage, we need to provide services and Station 4 would be utilized and resources to respond to calls for service.
I have a few questions. How is the other asphalt in the other fire stations?
So Station 5 and Station 2 are adequate. Station 2 does have the concrete that meets the proper grade that should have been there for the weight of the apparatus. Station 3 does need a recommended cover coat on it, a slurry seal, it doesn't need to be replaced with what's going on there, it had the proper amount of asphalt there. But that's going to be recommended later when we're doing some other recommendations to the station.
About Station 1, I know that Station 1 is utilized the most out of all the stations.
Well, right now, we're not really recommending anything for Station 1 because we're still in, you know.
That's true.
Trying to understand what we're going to do at Station 1.
In reference to Councilwoman Diaz, in regards to the funding, because I know like you mentioned that there's going to be other requests that's coming in, that is a lot of money and I mean, I know that's a requirement, but on your list of all your requirements that are needed, there are priorities and I just want to make sure funding is used for like calosha requirements or anything that is for the health and safety of the firemen and then go on to this because I don't want to be bombarded on next budget fiscal year with all these other requirements that they're all in need and that money could have been towards that. So in regards to your asphalt for this, where does this lie, fall in your priorities of request?
High priority. As we stated, the picture itself shows the damage that it's actually doing. As far as we know, this damage that's cursed here could be what's happening to the quint right now, the quint is stationed there and the damage to the transmission could be due to some problems driving over these humps and valleys or taking place there.
Is it a possibility for the quint to be stationed at another location?
Yes, it could, but the apparatus are, you know, you have a $50,000, $50,000 pound vehicle and a $60,000 pound vehicle, the difference is still going to have damage with this type of problems.
The lifespan of that current, what is the lifespan of that current concrete?
Well, according to engineer, of the concrete that we're expecting to put in, it has 30-plus years. We shouldn't even be, if we would have been put in according to the engineers, I'm not an expert on concrete, but according to the engineer, they stated if we would have done, if the concrete would have been put in at the beginning, we wouldn't even be talking about it. Matter of fact, there was concrete that was put in directly behind the fire station, about 15 feet. It's perfect, there's not even a crack in it. And the apparatus drive over it in the exact same spot from there. So if the proper concrete would have been put in at the time the building was built by the as-built plans, we wouldn't even be having a conversation now.
Was the building built?
I believe that station's well over 30, 40 years old.
Mayor, can I just add one more thought on this general topic? We had gone through an assessment of which stations needed critical repairs now and this is under that initial allocation that you gave us to address these repairs. This is just evidence of the symptom of a maintenance philosophy which we've called run fail. Put an asset into service and you run it until it fails and then hopefully we don't act surprised when it does. But you can see by this picture, picture worth a thousand words, it's failed. And so I don't see this as nice to have, I see it as a must-have.
I understand. I was just, you know, just concerned for future allocation and funding where, you know, I know the fire needs a lot of things that is required and I just want to make sure that the money is being used for certain requirements that affects and calosha is my main concern of where the funding, I mean, money should be. Does anybody else have a question?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Okay, and I want to concur, okay, Councilwoman Diaz regarding, okay, and I spent $252,000 to on the Station 4, okay? And I watched about, okay, the budget town hall, okay? I think Mr. Grebich has a point, okay? Because you have a fire station, Station number one is the busiest, almost 40% of usage. And then the last use is Station number four. So, and like he say, okay, we're not going to lay off anybody, just want to put the, more resource into the one the most usage, okay? And in that way, and we maybe can control the overtime, that's why he say. And I think that's what your point about.
That's my point, exactly.
Possible, okay, if we doing this, so it's the city and the chief can look around how we utilize, okay, the resource and which station, which area they call the most, okay? And so in that way, we don't have to spend the money in the place, this usage, I think this.
Right, it's not used very often.
So then we spend the money to fix this play, doing a lot of thing, but they don't utilize the many of the usage, so we waste the money and plus, we try to overcome the overtime, well, that kind of counterproductive for our, control our budget about the overtime budget. So I think this is about what you're trying to say.
That is, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
If we're going to have a situation where we're going to have some absentee, if we're going to have some absence and we're not going to.
I'm not sure where those stats came from.
Oh, I think.
It was during the budget town hall meeting?
Yeah, I don't know where Mr. Grebich got those, it's a very business station.
I think we're just, please, okay, I just, my point is, you say, is, okay, we maybe have to see how we locate all this station wisely with our resource. If we use our resource to the place they use the most, then we don't have to, we spend all the money. We should build a Station number one, then what we propose, demolish, condemn the building because that is unfixable, so we want to build a brand-new Station number one. So we want to build maybe a big, okay, Station number one with office, this and that, and then we will put maybe two paramedic or something because they use it so, so much, people it's like using all the time, they cannot even have a lunch. So in that way, if that is the, okay, issue, then it's that we should put more resource in that area, that is the point, then if we don't use the Station number four, then people idling over there and we're not using, utilize. Chief, you understand what I'm talking about?
Absolutely.
So in that way, because we only have that much of a resource and we spend a lot of money, but we want to make sure some people, okay, they're so busy, they have help. And so in that way, we kind of move, okay, the people around. So in that way, do we need to spend this money if we want to relocate and look around, okay, how to utilize our, okay, manpower and the resource? Makes sense, makes sense to you?
Yes, so I'm not sure whether statistics came out that Station 4 was the slowest or doesn't need it. Station 4 has one of some of the largest target hazards within the city. It's one of the most important fire stations. We have a large wildland interface issue from that station. We would never want to close a resource out of Station 4 without having them available to have, we have the heights down there, we have other commercial properties, there's some large homes, we would always want to keep a resource.
Understand, understand, but the usage is only less than 10%.
I don't know where those numbers came from, they didn't come from my office.
We got it from you because 36%, almost 40% of Station number one, okay, and the Station 2 is about 70% and the Station 3 is about 15, okay, percent. And then, okay, Station 4 is less than 10% and the Station number 5 is about 13, 14, or 15%. That's how we have all the call you have and where geographic location for your fire station, so then we can see the number, we have that report, okay? And then we, that's why we understand, then, whoa, okay, Station 1 is so busy, okay, because they're close to the hospital and that area is like, they get a lot, a lot of calls. So how we utilize, okay, those resource, that's the point. I think that's what Councilwoman.
Right, I just don't want to end up spending this money.
If we want to.
And then find out that we're going to close this or it's going to be browned out. That's all.
I have a question too. Go ahead, but answer.
I was just going to respond through the chair. I understand your concerns about these operational decisions and deployment questions. I'll review those with the chief and follow up on those, on those issues that you've raised.
What is the name of the, our current paving company who does our streets?
Well, it's a competitively bid process. This year, the annual payment program is being done, it's a $2 million project in total by Gentry Brothers. This contract is being recommended to All American Asphalt, who's done business with the city before. They are a reputable firm and probably one of the top five paving companies in Southern California. I know them, we have experience with them and they're very reputable and they're the low bidder on this piece.
Did you guys bid through Gentry Brothers or the one who does, because I, when they do our city streets, it looks fabulous and it's great and it's, did they bid for this or was that extended to them at all?
We did put it out publicly to bid, they were not one of the firms that responded. We've got included in your staff report, a listing of all the companies, but for whatever reason, they did not respond to this bid.
Were they aware?
Yes.
I was just wondering, since they're already doing our city streets, probably would offer a better deal on the costs. That's what I was just wondering. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead. I'm going to go have him go first.
On the, the report mentions that it'll be concrete as opposed to asphalt, right?
It'll be a mixture. In the portions where the drive path for the very heavy equipment, it'll be concrete and the areas that would be like parking for vehicles and other, maybe some training and some of that will be asphalt.
My question is, in the concrete part, will it have rebar in the concrete?
Yes, there's a specific standard required for a certain amount of weight and engineers.
That's what I thought, it just wasn't specified, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Do we have urgency to approve this? Do we have urgency? Can we, okay, I don't know, do we have urgency, we have to do this right away? Can we, again, okay, I have no problem, okay, to fix something, need to be fixed, okay? But the concern, okay, I think we have, or I have, okay, okay, Councilwoman Diaz, okay, has, okay, basically, if we want to restructure, see how we move, okay, to someplace like 40%, 36, 37% usage, they can have more resource, so we maybe have to move some people to that location in the very near future. So then this place, okay, I don't know, we still will using something?
Standards of coverage, Councilman, we would never recommend to move, move the resource from there and put all the resources in one district because the calls don't come down where they're all in Station 1. Those numbers that you get are an overall 12-month analysis of the calls for service. There's days that Station 4 may be the most busiest station for a couple of days in a row and there's days that Station 1 is the slowest. So we would never want to put all our eggs in one basket and then hope all the calls are there and then respond longer to Station 4. When we want to do standards of coverage, we want to have the closest resource to help save somebody's life, mitigate emergency as quick as possible. And that's why we have district.
I understand, Chief, but I'm kind of confused. Okay, the number is right there, okay, most usage is Station 1, okay? And the least usage, that is Station 4, that is from the report. So you say sometime, maybe one day out of 30-day, you have more call, but most of the time, they have no call, okay? But at the same time, on the Station number one, they're busy all the time. So that's my point is, okay, if they need more people, why not we move Station 4 people to help them over there? If we, based on that, we build a little bit bigger, okay, station over there based on the usage. Because since we're going to build a station for you, so you don't want to build a small one and then you only can put, okay, few, okay, to take care of so many calls. Because I think future call will be even more due to the expansion of emergency room and this and that, okay? And a lot of, I don't know, possible usage. So is that, maybe we need to see the futures prepare right now because since this coming and we based on the number. So in that way, and we only have this, okay, staff and the budget and we based on that, how we strategically and put the. and put the, okay, why, why resource in the place the most busiest and airy, right? Right? Makes sense?
Also makes sense, but as I was saying, it's, that's why we have the standards of coverage, is why we have the five stations to cover and overlap each other when calls come down. We would not want them all out of one.
You mean, your point is, no matter what, you want to.
Absolutely, because.
Get this place, and they're not going to do anything?
And there's more, there's way more pictures. We weren't able to take all the pictures, but if we were able to, there.
No, 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 we have, no, we try, we know, we know that place need fixed, but just if we need to move these people to station one or some other places, why we need to fix this place? That's the point.
It would never be recommended from this office to shut down station four and not have resources there. Because, because of the, the target hazards and the need for resources to be adequately available, we have high-impact areas there. We have large homes, we have the wildland interface, we have the heights, we have other infrastructure in the city that needs that resources to rapidly respond to.
So you really need that place? We spend a $5252,000 and plus repair?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So city manager, you concur that we need, you understand what we're talking about is based on the, okay, our audit commissioner talking about how we control overtime. So how you control overtime, if you cannot utilize changing the location, how you control overtime?
Through the chair. I, I think regardless of which rolling stock is assigned to which station based on calls for service, service demands, and responses, this physical repair is necessary in any scenario. It may be that the chief will decide to put the quint at another fire station. That's the biggest one we've got, the big ladder truck, only carries, I think, 300 gallons of water. Water weighs, I don't know, seven pounds a gallon, so that's a big load. Our normal pumper engines carry maybe more water, but it's still a, a big demand on the, on the station and on the asphalt. So this is designed to meet that H10 loading requirement. It's a structural section, and this has failed, so I think it's, it's appropriate. Okay.
Of course. Okay, again, the argument is not about the repair, the repair, of course, they need to look pretty bad, and especially you have such a heavy-duty truck, okay, the engine's very heavy, have a lot of equipment. This is failing big time, okay, but the argument over here is the future, how we locate, and if we really will do that route, and then we spend, fixing the concrete will be wasted. If we only for paramedic only, you move the engine to someplace else. That, that's the concern, okay, why you spend the money, that's what happened to the city all the time. We spend the thing we didn't prepare for future, then you have to remove it and waste the taxpayers' money. That, that is the concern I have. Okay, I give my time. Thank you.
Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, in the January meeting, when the, I believe it was 1.6 million was, was approved, this was one of the, the items for repair that was part of that 1.6 million?
That's correct.
And, and in that, I mean, I don't have it necessarily in front of me, was the anticipated cost around a quarter of a million dollars at, at that time?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was estimated 250.
And I know at, at that time, I, I had requested priorities of what we should do first, but I don't want to take you all the way back to January, but as of today, you would say this is a top priority item that, that needs to be done?
Yes, I believe back in January, when you asked that question, I stated the things we brought to you that night are the top priorities. There's a, a longer laundry list also associated with this, that we feel we can wait to get to. Those ones were the priorities and the, the most important.
Okay. So, so this isn't a new item, then? This is from January?
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Good evening, Mayor. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Castellanos, and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Nope.
Councilwoman Diaz?
No.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Thank you very much. Onto agenda item 10, pulled by Councilwoman Diaz.
Okay, well, my first question is, or the reason why I pulled it was, I noticed that, I want to know why we went with BOA company for $55,500?
Yes.
Why were, why were they chosen?
So the, the project manager, myself, and the city's engineer all reviewed all of the submittals, and due to the ratings that came through, by looking at all the ratings, they came out number one. We understand they're roughly $4,000 more than the, than the lower one that submitted, that properly submitted a bid, and they're the ones that have the most extensive history with doing this type of remodels for fire stations, a lot of them locally. They understand the fiscal needs of, of cities to keep it within, within our needs. And the other, the other bidder, we weren't, we feel that they had done it. They had been more residential, they hadn't done many fire department, they haven't done more commercial government stuff, or understand what we need to keep it. We want it to last for a long time. We don't want to have it residential grade. We want somebody's done this before.
So this, okay, you know, I'm just about saving some money here, right? So this SVA architects for $45,000, I guess they didn't comply with the forms that were needed?
That's correct.
And so I'm just wondering, is that something we don't follow up on?
We did. We did follow up. The engineer followed up with the ones that didn't, to ask if they still could, and they still didn't. So they, it felt like they weren't really interested in complying with what the needs of the city was. So if that's where they were before we even picked them, how was it gonna be when we, if we chose them? Was the ideal, dealing with the engineer and just.
So they just.
Does this under regular.
They chose not to comply?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and so Rubio Medina architect, you're saying, you would say they're not as qualified?
Yes, they hadn't done the government-type businesses and stuff that we had. Everybody submitted what they've done, and people they contract with that also help with it, electrical contractors, roofing and stuff like that. They hadn't done anything related to what we need for governmental.
I see. Okay. Okay, and so the, now this is where they have the, I guess this is, where's city manager? The $1.3 million, is that coming from the general fund, city manager?
Yes.
So, so this is the one that was, that you guys were referring to earlier, right?
This is from the original CIP request. That was approved by this body.
Okay.
That's all I have. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this is, okay, architecture for the 1.3 million dollars improvement, right?
No, this is a request to spend $55,000 for the architectural services to meet us into standards for OSHA and ADA requirements for remodeling Fire Station 3 and bringing up to compliance in today's standards. There's been a lot of stuff done over the many, many years, that it was a library, fire administration, and then condemned, asbestos, walls are added. So we need an architect that's gonna come in and tell us what's gonna meet the structural needs.
So this is for all the station?
The whole thing. We're gonna incorporate, if you've ever been to that station, there's a library that's closed, it also was utilized as fire administration many years ago, and it's vacant. Then there's a fire station with a common wall. We're gonna actually make it all one location. Because we're out of compliant for OSHA needs for dormitories and things like that. Bathrooms are not in today's standards, and so we need to rectify that as soon as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diaz, and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, on to item number 12, pulled by Mayor Protim Castellanos.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and residents. Chief Richard Bell, here to answer your questions.
If you could just give us an overview of what this Cyentia group does for us?
Sure. The Cyentia group, they've been with the police department for about seven, eight years. They have been extremely instrumental in keeping the police department running efficiently. They have, over the years, been instrumental in the complete infrastructure, overall data conversion, all of our vehicle MDTs and computer IT issues. They've been instrumental in keeping that running and up to date. If you have been reading in the papers lately, you will know that a lot of the agencies under attack from cyber attacks. West Covina has been fortunate enough to have Cyentia having the knowledge that they do to keep us protected. Not only have they kept us protected, but they have implemented a system that if we were to get attacked, that we could be up and running within a few days because of the safe fails he has implemented, or the group has implemented into our department. They have a staff of IT of two. They have a support staff of an additional four. So they are well-respected in the industry. One of the agencies that have just been under attack has actually inquired them to come over and help, and he has helped bring them back to a safe place where they can run their operations. So Cyentia, although he's not readily seen, he is behind the scenes where he needs to be, and he's protecting our department in a much-needed way.
So they're pretty good at what they do?
I would say they're extremely good at what they do. I support them 100%. They're on-call 24/7, very responsive to our needs, and they have done our department well over the years.
Are they good with audio/video by any chance?
Maybe we should join them.
I mean, I don't, you know, well, we, we know the history here with our mics, but seriously, do you know if they have expertise?
I would have to ask them. I know they're, they're good with the IT and that sort of infrastructure, CAT RMS and those things. I would really have to ask them. I can't speak for them.
Something we can say for later. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to know who they are and how they help us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will be more than happy, since he is behind the scenes, maybe prior to a closed session or anything, I'll bring him up, just introduce him, and he can just say hi, so he can put a face with it.
Sounds good.
How long have you been using, utilizing them?
I think they've been with us from between seven and eight years. Yeah.
What, 27?
Seven to eight years.
Oh, seven to eight years. Okay. And thank you that it doesn't impact our general fund, that it comes from federal asset forfeiture fund.
I thought you would like that.
I like that. I made sure I noticed that. Not our general fund, but, because that, that's 495,000, right?
Yes.
And that's a big impact, so, thank you. Question, Councilman Wu?
Okay, quick question. So, okay, I think, okay, we, can we combine entire city altogether with the IT, with a wall of umbrella? So in that way, okay, we have, because when I pitch and pitch, okay, all the places, right, okay, then, I don't know, is it possible we can have the city and the police and fire all under one IT service?
Let me just caution you on the police side of it. We've been fortunate to have asset seizure to be able to pay for it. As you know, technology increases steadily, and we, we, the money that come from the asset seizure can only be used for police, cannot be used for other entities. So if you combine that and you do that, then the city's gonna take on that burden. So I would, I would leave it as it is now.
My question would be, no, we continue using that, but we hire them to using, can we do this combination?
I'm not in control of that.
So meaning, it's just a suggestion that any possibility with a good IT that can take care of entire city issue, not only the police, that is a funding from the federal and for features, but at the same time, we can use our general fund to do umbrella to, because we have a cyber attack, all this going on all the time, plus all the IT issue, all the computer, all the mic, is, okay, all these things, we've been struggling and frustrated. So maybe it all can in the one umbrella, so it would be more efficient. Okay, so if we need something, okay, right there. This is just my, okay, question, is that possible?
You've never had a problem with them, right?
We, we haven't. I mean, you know, it's IT.
Not all IT is the same.
You know, they have to, you know, yeah.
But we don't know, combine, combine the, the, their, their funding and our paying them all together. I don't know this part. City manager, you want to answer this?
Well, through the chair. I, I understand the question and the interest. I'm happy to look into that and report back to council about it. I think options for, for municipal services of, of any stripe are always good. We're always looking for, for options and service provisions. We're happy to explore those questions with you.
It's good for the IT to be up to date with all the technology. And sometimes, when you have your own IT, it's not, they're not up to par. And if, like, like I said, this one, they, they always have to keep, keep up with the updates and everything. So that is a concern that we'd like to see and implement it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve?
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Mayor Protim Castellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that ends Consent Calendar.
Item number 12, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that, that was, I, that was 12.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're done with Consent Calendar.
We're, we're.
Okay.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. Now, under Consent Calendar done, public hearing, item 15 and 16 is regarding citywide sewer service charge to be collected on fiscal year 2021, 2022, tax rule, and public hearing regarding assessment for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. This matter was set for public hearing, is for the setting of the assessment rates for the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District, and for authorizing the collection of the annual sewer service charge through the county tax bill. Would the city, city clerk verify the proper legal notice that has been given?
Proper notice was given, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I shall open to public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District and the sewer service charge. So who will be making the presentation? Gee? Oh, are you gonna make the presentation?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Shona Gano with Willden Financial Services. And tonight's proceedings will be held to obtain approval for the levy of the fiscal year 21, 22 assessments. Next slide, please. These proceedings require to continue to provide maintenance and service work under the citywide sewer service charge and citywide lighting and maintenance district, and to collect assessments on the property tax bill for fiscal year 21, 22. At its regular meeting on May 18th, the city council preliminarily approved the engineer's report, as well as declared its intention to levy, and set the public hearing for June 15th. Next slide, please. In fiscal year 1718, the 2016 sewer system management plan was approved, and in that number, in that number of projects were identified to update the city sewer system totaling 13.6 million. In order to raise enough revenue, the city performed Proposition 218 proceedings to increase the rates over the course of five years. There was no majority protest, and this year would be the final year of increase according to those proceedings. The citywide LMD is a 1972 active landscaping and lighting district. It is utilized by local governments to pay for landscaping, lighting, and other improvements and services located within the public areas. Next slide, please. The sewer service pays for the maintenance and operation of the city sewer system, assuring the lines are clear and properly flowing. This includes routine, expect, routine video inspections, jetting, and cleaning of sewer lines. The sewer service also funds capital improvements such as purchase of sewer equipment and replacement of sewer main lines. The citywide sewer, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the sewer, citywide LMD currently pays for the operation and maintenance of street trees and street lighting, to include street trimming, removal and replacement of diseased street trees, and operation and maintenance of the street lights. The sewer service charge is only collected from properties connected to the city sewer line. For the citywide LMD, all is assessed with the exception of parcels such as public streets, public green belts, and small parcels with little to no value. The assessment or charge that pay for ongoing services will continue as long as the service is being provided. Sewer service budget, total funding for this year, including assessments, prior balance, interest, and ad valorem revenue, totals 6.3 million. This year, with the maintenance costs and capital improvement projects being funded, totals 4.3 million, leaving 2 million left. The ending balance will be used for upcoming scheduled capital improvement projects. This year, the scheduled capital improvement project is the sewer mainline replacement at the portions of Glenview Road, Michelle Street, and Azusa Avenue. The budget for this project is $2 million. The budget for this project is $2 million. The citywide LMD maintenance costs, approximately 1.6 million to include supplies, electricity, water, vehicle maintenance, gas, and et cetera. The citywide LMD budget, after revenues of approximately 1.8 million and the expenses, the ending balance will be 1.7 million. It has been determined that the citywide LMD is underfunded. The assessments are not enough to cover the cost of increasing maintenances and services. As a result, maintenance has decreased over the years due to that limited funding. Assessment rates can only be increased with the property owner vote, also known as Proposition 218. City staff would like to visit Proposition 218 process within this next year. Community, community meetings will be held where we educate the community and discuss the, discuss what the city staff will be doing with the increase to include, to include repair and replace light standards, hardscape repair and replacement of offgrade and cracked and broken sidewalks, AD8 ramps, and trash removal, et cetera. Annually, staff reviews and analyzes the maintenance needs of the districts in conjunction with the funds on hand to arrive at the net costs to be distributed among the parcels. The assessment rate is determined by dividing the costs by the total EDUs. The EDU method, the equivalent dwelling unit method, is utilized for and established as a basic unit or base value of benefit. It is typically seen as the most appropriate and equitable assessment methodology for assessment districts. This year, the rate will increase by 5% from $78.12 to $82.02. There was no majority protest against the increase in fiscal year 1718, and the city can now impose that rate of $82.02. Total assessment for this district will be approximately $3.8 million. Citywide LMD rates can, can increase by CPI or 2%, but no greater than 2%. The March CPI is 2.19%. Therefore, the rates will increase this fiscal year by 2%. Local lighting is 12.91. Lighting for Zone A is 39.26. Lighting for Zone B is $62.14, and street trees is 1781. The rates are utilized in a formula to calculate the total assessment. For the sewer service assessments, the residential equates to 1 EDU per dwelling unit, while commercial is 667 feet, I'm sorry, 667 square feet of floor area equates to 1 EDU. The formula is rate times EDU, which will give us our assessment. For example, for single-family residential, we take the rate of $82.02 times the 1 EDU will get, will equal $82.02. For commercial property with 2,000 square feet, rate is 8202 times 2.999 EDU, equaling Citywide LMD assessments, we take the EDU times the light benefit factor, which is three for residential and four for commercial to get the light benefit units. Next, we take the light rate times the, I'm sorry, we next we take the light rate times light benefit units plus the tree rate times the EDU to get the total assessment. It's a lot more difficult than the sewer district. For example, for a single-family residential, we take the light rate of $12.91 times the light benefit unit 3 plus tree rate of 1781 times the 1 EDU, equaling $56.54. For the commercial property on 1 acre, we take the rate of $12.91 times 5 EDUs times the light benefit factor of 4 plus 1781 tree rate times 5 equaling $347.25. Next, we want the council to hold the public hearing, approve the resolution which permits assessments to be placed on the property tax rule. This now concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff by the city council?
Excuse me, I am done.
I know, it's very stuffy inside.
Oh, well, I think, well, you spoke very quick and, you know, so I greatly appreciate the energy. You okay?
We should let you sit over there.
I know.
Sorry about that.
Any questions? No. City clerk, have you received any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the West Covina City Lighting and Maintenance District?
I did not receive any communication prior to this evening, mayor.
Okay, is there anyone present who wishes to comment on these items?
Yes, I have one speaker, mayor.
Okay.
I believe you received some material from me.
I'm asking it out now, Mr. Grivage.
My issue is the, they call it a fee increase, but I consider it a tax increase of greater than inflation. And specifically, talk, want to talk about sewers. Those of you that were on the council last year may remember me talking about this before. When you read the engineering analysis, this blue sheet, it refers to the balance in the sewer fund as $2.2 million. If you take the attached page, which is from the city's actual budget, the balance is $6.6 million for the sewer fund. That is an enormous difference, and if you take into account that $6 million is available rather than 2, there is no reason to increase the sewer charge. The annual budget for this for the next five years is roughly $2 million. That's enough to pay for all the projects that were identified on the original project plan. The revenue that comes in is sufficient to pay for that, and there's tons of reserves left. $6 million is a lot of money. And I don't know where the consultant obtained the $2.2 million figure for the balance available. I have no idea. I looked back through all of the history in this fund, and I couldn't find any reconciliation for that number. It's been consistently, it's been actually slowly rising over the years. A few years back, the amount of money available was 5 million, and now it's up over 6 million because the city has actually been spending less on this project than they have coming in on revenue if you take all the years and put them together. I'm sorry the print is so small on the second page where you're looking at the actual city's budget, but that's what it is. I'm, I tried to expand it, and it didn't work, but if you look under Fund 180, I hope your eyes can read that good, Fund 187 is 6.6 million. So that's my issue. There's plenty of money there. There's no reason to raise, raise the fees, essentially it. And the, the reason stated in the engineering report is false. It said they need, they need to maintain the reserves. Oh, no, they don't. They can spend it. There's no reason to have $6 million of reserves there. So they think there's only 2. I think that's the reason they made this statement. I don't know why they think that. I'm repeating myself a little bit, but I'm done.
Do you like to address his, Mr. Grivage, considering?
If I may answer that question, the 2.25 million actually takes into account the CIP projects from last year that were funded. I believe it was, I can't think off the top of my head how much was funded for last year, but that takes into account all of the projects from last year. But unfortunately, with COVID, the city wasn't able to move forward with any of those projects. So that, that 2.2 million takes into account those projects from last year that haven't been, I don't know if they've been started yet or if they haven't even, what they've, what's going on with those projects, but those are for those other projects.
City manager, the projects at 2.25 million?
I didn't expect the question just from cold memory. The, the one project that I recall that we've delivered within the last year that ran into some construction delays was the Azusa Avenue lift station. Beyond that, I don't, I don't have a memory of that fact.
Is there any questions?
I have a question. When is the last time we raised this 2%? You want to ask?
No, I was going to ask that. Oh, that was in my mind. And how often do you raise?
So for, is this for sewer or for the city, the citywide lighting? So the, the sewer district does increase after the, after our five years here with the, the increase with the CIP projects. It does increase by CPI after that. It'll be every year increased after that. For the LMD, that also does get increased every single year with, at a maximum of 2%.
So this is already building, I, I remember we talked about this back, back in 2017 or something regarding this issue and the sewer and the lighting industry. Okay, so, so I just don't remember, okay, okay, how often we, okay, give this 2%. Okay, it's like CPI index, something to our trash, something to some other, okay, I think, I think currently the water become outrageous, become increased a lot, but our sewer disan, is still 2%. And ours, okay, okay, trash, ethane, I think it's what CPI, CPI only, right, not plus one. I think we turned down the plus one.
Not do the plus one.
Yeah, so basically CPI only. So what CPI right now is currently, I think, something in the, huh? Because I know we have inflation going on right now. Right now, it's like more than 4% due to the...
2.19 was the March CPI.
2.19?
Mm-hmm.
So, so we, so we are doing this 2% yearly?
Correct, correct, up to 2% every single year.
How much reserve we have right now in the sewer fund and our lighting both? How much we have?
In sewer, after all the expenses, including the CIP projects from last year as well as for this year, it'll be about $2 million, which is remaining for the, whatever remaining projects that the city will have.
So basically, this 2% is what we approved before, then automatically 2% okay, increase?
You said there was something that was 5%. What was the 5%?
So that one, that one's for the sewer projects right now, based on that, that 2016 analysis. It goes, it went, I believe it was 20% the first year and then 5% for four years after that.
So every four years, 5%?
Mm-hmm, for, for just this, this amount of five years. So after this year, it's not going to be 5% anymore. It'll be 2%, I'm sorry, CPI after that.
So based on CPI index, and, and this 2% is just for this year?
That's correct. And then for next year, we, we hope to, to revisit the, the actual district and see if we need to reassess or, or do any changes for the budget. And that could change rates at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 there's, is it, or we have a speaker?
I don't have any other speaker cards, mayor.
Oh. Okay.
If you need it. Jim presented a pretty good argument for this being a unnecessary fee increase, and perhaps that should be investigated in more detail. Additionally, sometimes you can apply lighting technology and actually save power and improve the lighting if you, during this process, investigate how you can save power and improve the community lighting. If security in the community is a problem, or if it's because of, you know, avoidance of crime and stuff like that, you might be able to make substantial improvements if you, under this item, improved our lighting technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that something you could address in regards to lighting, please?
Yes, so during, during the, the community meeting and during our Proposition 218 process, that's when we're going to really, really evaluate the districts and see, you know, what else we can do to save money.
Okay, thank you. So then everybody else has the opportunity to come to the meeting and go ahead and...
Thank you for having me.
Uh, any other public comment? So then I posed a public comment, and we had the motion and a second.
If I can, mayor, I will need to take each resolution separately, so if I can have a, a motion in order to adopt Resolution 2021-69.
Make a motion for that.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Costelanos and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai for Resolution 2021-69. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Onto the second motion of this, continuing?
Yes, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-70.
Make a motion for this one.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Costelanos and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai to adopt Resolution 2021-70. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. That ends that. Now we have the departmental regular matters. Item number 17, consideration of the city of West Covina fiscal year 2021, 2022 annual operating and capital budget. City manager, who will present the update?
Good evening again, mayor and council. With this item, we are pleased tonight to present the city's budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2122. This is basically a rollover budget, although general fund revenues are off more than $2.3 million because of the pandemic. For our presentation tonight, I've asked our finance director, Robin Byrd, and our assistant finance director, Stephanie Sicama, to present a PowerPoint providing details about the budget and the American Rescue Plan Act. At the end of these presentations, we'll save time for council questions. With that, we'll invite Director Byrd to begin with the PowerPoint.
Thank you. City manager Carney, mayor, and members of the council. Just starting off with the agenda, we're going to overview the assumptions that were used to, in preparation of this budget. Then we're going to look at all funds, which is a macro view of revenues and expenditures, and then we'll refine it more down to a micro, looking at the general fund revenues and expenditures. We're going to talk briefly about the CIP program, and we're going to save questions to the end. After I'm done with the budget presentation, our assistant finance director has another part of the PowerPoint that talks about the Recovery Act funds. And so if we can hold the questions to the end for all of this, I think it will expedite this process. So as you all remember, I'm sure, on March 16th of 2020, there was a major loss, there was a pandemic declared nationwide, worldwide, actually. It caused a major loss of sales tax revenue. We lost city businesses. Our residents lost employment, as well as the businesses had to lay off people. And then there was talk of a second wave. We continue to see, due to the pandemic, rising costs in all the services that we provide. So therefore, we took a very conservative approach. At the time the budget was developed, it was January when we started this process. So we used a very conservative approach because we didn't know how things were going to unfold. We didn't know when and if the state was going to reopen and businesses could reopen, when we can get back to normal life. So I used a very conservative approach for our revenues, which I think was prudent. And due to the loss of those revenues, we have a structural deficit of $2.3 million in this budget. Over time, for public safety continues to be an area of concern for the city, and we continue to look at alternatives to those expenditures. And I need to mention that the West Covina Sports Plaque and the Health Department are not included in this budget, and once we get those budgets developed, we will come back to the city council with those budgets. Overview of our expenditure projections. As the city manager previously said, this was a rollover budget, meaning that we took most of the last year's expenditures and revenues and just rolled it over into this year. Some exceptions to that were where we knew contracts were already increased, we know we have to pay them, so we increased those expenditures. We continue to identify areas where we can maximize our special funds and minimize any impact to the general fund. And the city, especially our city clerk's office, has been evaluating ongoing contracts. And as we identify areas that we think we might be able to save money, we go out to bid on those contracts. And then we expect for there to be some salary savings through attrition. Now we're going to look at the all funds. In this slide, there's $145.7 million in revenues across all funds, with the general fund being 47%. And then on the expenditure side, there's $159.6 million of expenditures, and that the general fund again accounts for 40... And that, the general fund, again, accounts for forty-two percent of that. And the reason that the expenditure side on the all funds basis is so much higher than the revenues is because we don't always receive enough revenues in the special funds to do a project in, in the first year. So we accumulate those funds over time. When we get enough money to do those projects, then, um, we spend that money. So it causes the expenditures to be higher. This slide, um, is just, uh, showing our expenditures by category. It's the same, $159.6 million, um, broken down between salaries and benefits, maintenance of oper, maintenance and operations, which are both twenty-nine percent. And then our capital projects and equipment is twenty-seven percent, with our debt service, um, and that last piece being only fifteen percent. And we're gonna move on now to the general fund. And on this chart, revenues are in blue and expenditures are in red. And as you can see, there's seven years of data here. And in many of those years, our expenditures were higher than our revenues, which indicates that we were spending down our reserves. For fiscal year 2122, as I mentioned before, we have $2.3 million, um, that we're proposing to use in reserves, um, to balance the budget this year. And that's almost entirely due to the loss of revenue. So our general fund revenues are $67.8 million. And, uh, property tax and sales tax are our major revenue sources, which make up, um, about sixty-five percent of that budget. I wanna point out at the bottom of that chart, um, the little wedge there that's, um, state's fund balance, three percent, that's the $2.3 million that, um, I mentioned we're using to balance this budget. I see this, um, as a temporary situation. I think it very likely could be that the revenues may come in higher, especially now that, uh, we know that the governor opened up the state as of today or yesterday, I can't remember which one it was. And our revenues could very likely come in higher. I feel comfortable with the numbers I put in at the time until we absolutely know, um, that those revenues are gonna come in higher. This, um, graph here, uh, we're looking at property tax. And it starts in nine-ten and, um, continues on to twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And it indicates that property tax has always been a very stable revenue source for us. And we, and we think it'll continue to do so. This is, um, the same number of years, um, only it's sales tax. And it's fluctuated over the years some, but, um, again, overall, it's been a very stable revenue source for the city. This slide, we took, um, our two largest revenue sources, property tax and sales tax. And, um, those are in the blue. And put it against public safety expenditures, that's both police and fire. And so you can see in a number of years, um, that those revenues were far less than the expenditures for public safety. But in the last couple of years, our, our property tax and sales tax now is higher than our expenditures in the police and fire department. In this, um, slide, um, again, we show sixty-seven point eight, um, million dollars in expenditures. And our police and fire account for sixty percent of that. This is just, again, breaking it up a different way. We're showing salaries and benefits and maintenance and operations. And you can see that the work that we do here at the city is very labor intensive. And I've said, and you've heard the city manager say, um, many times over the, um, last couple of years, that this is our most valuable resource that the city has is our employees. And then we took a look at police and fire overtime. These tables, um, compare actual totals for each year. Overtime for police was about $2.9 million last fiscal year and fire was $2.6 million. As I mentioned before, we're still, um, we are continuing to look at alternatives in services to minimize those overtime costs. So this, this slide here is a projection of our fund balance at 2021. And we expect it to be $21.4 million. Out of that, three point five million is what we consider to be non-spendable. And the reason it's non-spendable is because of loans, uh, that are due either from the successor agency or other funds. And so until we collect that money, it's not in spendable form, even though it's in fund balance. So that would leave our on-assigned fund balance at June thirty twenty-one at seventeen point, almost seventeen point nine million, which is twenty-six point eight percent of our operating expenditures. Now, our policy for our, um, on-assigned fund balance is seventeen percent. So we're well over that. The year before this, um, we were, were just a little over. And the year before that, we were in violation of that policy. So we have built up the reserves in the last couple of years in on-assigned fund balance. And this is a look at, a historic look at the last fifteen years. And as you can see, in those early years, you're continuing to see it down from oh-six, oh-seven to eleven, twelve. We were continuing to spend the reserves. And then you see a big dip there, which was when, uh, the dissolution of redevelopment, um, occurred. And then you see it go up in fourteen, fifteen. And I believe that was probably due to, there was, when they dissolved redevelopment, um, there was a lot of confusion about how things were gonna be recorded. And there was back and forth with the Department of Finance on getting certain loans and things approved. And I believe that once some of that got, um, determined, then fund balance went up. Few years after that, it went down a little bit. It went up, um, the last several years, we, we're starting to see it go up again. And then our CIP project, um, our program for 2021, we're on, um, target to spend, uh, the $6.6 million, um, that was, um, budgeted. And then, um, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget that's before you tonight is thirty, thirty-eight point seven. And, and a large portion of that is, um, the Recovery Act. When this slide was put together, we, we knew it was around twenty million. So we, um, are going to propose truing that up with the presentation that our assistant finance director's gonna do after that, um, this, now that we know the exact number that those Recovery Act monies were. But it's not a huge amount. It's, this is twenty-one point two. And, um, we received nineteen, almost twenty million. So, um, we're gonna true that up in the budget tonight, uh, um, once it's approved and once the printed copy comes forward. And this shows you again, um, a graphical depiction of the numbers for twenty-one, twenty-two. And you can see that fifty-five percent of that is gonna be, uh, the Recovery Act funds. The public input on the budget, um, we met with the Finance and Audit Committee on April seventh. We asked for recommendations, and I'll go over those in a, in a second here. We had two, uh, public town hall meetings on, one on May nineteenth and one on June ninth. And I'll talk about, um, those discussions in a couple of slides. So, um, during the Finance and Audit Committee, um, budget, um, presentation to them, there was a recommendation that we review the fire overtime utilization and freeze hiring until there is a vacancy in one captain, one engineer and one firefighter. They say that there's an estimated savings of $750,000 annually. These are not my numbers. These were numbers, numbers that were put together by the committee. So I, I'm just reporting what they said at that meeting. They wanted to reduce service out of Fire Station Four, um, develop a new policy that requires one week of vacation each year to be taken as a shift. And those absences would not, um, be covered with overtime. And that would, um, equal a total of forty-five weeks per, per year citywide, with an estimated savings of $400,000 annually. They recommended a tiered response by contracting with LAFD or LA County Fire, uh, to eliminate one ALS, um, um, and ambulance with, um, two BLS ambulances. And on the, as far as police go, they wanted us to look at vehicle code fines, moving violations, parking code fines and false alarm fees. They wanted us to create permits for street sweeping or overnight parking. They wanted us to look into non-sworn employees to perform duties that are now done by sworn personnel. And then in the city manager's office, they wanted us to examine specific expenditure line items to possibly reduce cost. And in particular, they were, um, asking about the copier lease. As far as town, town hall meetings, um, there were several things that came up during those conversations. Again, address fire department overtime and consider Browning out of station. There was concern that the budget didn't address the Health Department. There was concern that we're deficit spending. They wanted the budgeted property tax revenue line item increased. And they wanted, um, us to show estimate to actuals instead of prior budgeted. Wanted us to use long-range financial planning and consider adding foul ball netting at ballparks. More police officers they wanted us to add. They wanted us to consider utilizing, utilizing federal funding. And I think that's the Recovery Act monies to assist businesses rather than keep it all in the city and consider bringing back the false alarm program. The next steps, I mean, of course, we're here tonight to ask you to, to adopt this budget. But as we go through the coming year, we're gonna monitor revenues and expenditures timely. We'll make necessary adjustments to the budget. It's a fluid process, it's not static. So there's always gonna be budget amendments. We, we need to continue, we've already started doing this, um, shift from reactive to preventive maintenance. We want to adhere to the adopted budget policies. We want to prepare a plan to resolve general fund structural deficit and maintain general fund reserves for the city policy. And, um, as we go into this next fiscal year, we've got, um, all of our, um, nine union contracts that we'll be negotiating and we need to adopt alternative dispute resolution, interest-based bargaining procedures. With that, I'm gonna ask Stephanie, um, to give this part of the presentation. And then after that, we'll allow time for questions.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the, um, part of the American Recovery Act included $350 billion for state and local recovery. The City of West Covina will be receiving $19.5 million. We received the first fifty percent this month and expect to receive the next fifty percent in 2022. We have until December twenty-twenty-fourth to obligate this funding and then till December twenty-twenty-six to actually utilize it. This Recovery Act funds are intended to support public health expenditures, address negative economic impacts, replace public sector revenue, which can be used for government services, provide premium pay for essential workers and invest in water and sewer and broadband infrastructure. So there was only five specific categories in which these fundings could be used. It did have restrictions in this insight. You are not allowed to pay interest or principal on outstanding debt, replenish any rainy day funds or other reserves, pay settlement or judgments, is, um, deposit any funding into a pension fund or, uh, cannot be used to match any non-federal grants. Based on this criteria, staff came up with a list. And for the first portion, we're proposing to support public health expenses related to COVID-19 and utilize nine million of that. Part of that will be for EKGs, uh, police and fire communication equipment at three point three million, fire station repairs, because they were used as our vaccine point of distribution and response facilities, around five point three million. And then the professional services agreement that council previously approved for the Health Department services at ninety-eight thousand. The next category is about one million that staff is proposing to be used to address negative economic impacts, this, to specifically partner with community organizations for job training and creation. And then the last nine million, which is estimated to come from lost revenue, which may be used for general government services. So it's the broadest category the city has available for its use. And staff is proposing to use this for IT infrastructure, for city buildings to replace a system that is no longer supported. A new financial accounting software system so the city can be more transparent and efficient. Park pathway and sports field lighting, an ADA transition plan, uh, removal of communication tower that is no longer being used, but the city is currently paying a monthly fee for. And then public safety equipment, including SCBA's, two pumper fire trucks and one Quint ladder truck. So with that, we will take any questions.
Thank you for that second half. It was nice to see that breakdown, because I know sometimes residents says, put it here. Well, obviously, we can't, so, uh, thank you for that. I'll go ahead and see, oh, Councilman Wu, first question.
Okay, I, I have a question for, um, our finance directors, okay? And, uh, and I understand, okay, our expenditures, basically, we know how much we have to spend due to, okay, we have a regular pay, we have to pay, okay? Our personnel, our pension, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so, but, okay, your projection revenue is based on, okay, and the twenty-twenty last year, right?
That's correct.
So you cannot base on two thousand and nineteen, pre-pandemic? You cannot do it due to this accounting, you, you only can base on last year, am I right?
I, I based it on last year, um, due to the uncertainty. I, I mean, again, this, this has been developed over the last six months. And when we begin it, um, I, I take the information that I have at the time. We, at that point, did not know when this pandemic's gonna end, when things are gonna open. So I didn't wanna count on that revenue, uh, when there's so much risk associated with it.
It's a base on very conservative, okay? And during the pandemic, because during the pandemic, one of the sector, we do not receive a dime. That is TOT, uh, transferred, okay, okay, occupancy tax for all the hotel, because they shut down.
We received some.
Yeah, but we, regularly, we receive $2 million or more annually, right? My understanding is, uh, about $2 million for all the hotel TOT tax annually, we receive that. And then we receive very little last year. So what I'm trying to set it up is, uh, nothing wrong, okay? This is accounting you need to base on two thousand and twenty last year to prove how much we have. And you cannot using something that, okay, is not there. And you cannot even use two thousand and nineteen, the pre-pandemic. And then what I'm trying to say is this, okay, uh, we can, okay, okay, basically, right now, we can see the hotel, the parking lot, there is full. And when I see that full, I'm happy, because I can hear the kaching going to our city, the ten percent. And then we need it, okay? We need that, okay? And you know, all the hotel on the West Round Row, they all open, okay? The, the Best Western's open, okay? The, okay, and the Holiday Inn already opened for so many months. And, uh, Hamilton, they all open right now. So we can see, okay, that, that is going to bring us revenue. And plus the Cross Street, the staff, okay, what, okay, start, five star, okay, or days in, okay? I think now it's starting receiving, because so-called revenge shopping, the people starting traveling around and they wanna book hotel. And, uh, I went to the shopping mall, I see a lot of people just a couple of days ago. So you can see, okay, and this revenge, okay, and shopping or consumer confidence is very high. And a lot of people right now, they have a lot of free money, okay? Did they have to spend on the year and a half? So, so what I'm saying is this, what I'm saying is, is based on your calculation of a, of a revenue, what I'm seeing, I think possible twenty percent less, okay? Based on current, if you base on June thirtieth of this year, it's not there yet, the projection to next year, June thirtieth, okay, and twenty-twenty-two. June thirtieth, okay, and twenty twenty-two. And I think we should have a much better number than last year due to we starting today, opening up everything. I think even Dutch stadiums right now, okay, fully booked, people already watching the ballgame in live over there. So meaning the normalcy coming back. So in that way, I think we should have more revenue than your number. I understand your number nothing wrong, you have to base on something. But am I right? I think we should have more money, okay? And so we, our revenue's there. So when somebody say we spending, okay, something is not there because, but because we don't have a TOT, we don't have a sales tax, we don't have a property tax, probably selling like crazy, okay, twenty percent up. West Covina, you cannot even find any inventory because you're coming out, it's sold right away. So meaning, okay, all this increasing, okay, our property tax, sales tax, TOT tax. So I think that's all the revenue, okay? And currently, we have a lot of construction. And especially, you have a couple of big project, okay? And that's all income, you didn't calculate on your revenue. So, and that million dollars, am I right?
Right, and it is a conservative number. I feel comfortable in that. I also feel comfortable saying that as the year goes on and we get more information and the money does start going in, we don't spend into the reserves unless, I mean, just by the function of the accounting, it's revenues minus expenditures. If revenues are higher than expenditures, you're going to build the reserves.
But again, we don't want to waste the money.
No, we're not going to waste.
Yeah, we don't want to say, oh, we have quite a lot of money coming in, then we should spend, 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 spend. No, it's not my point. My point is, we should spend the money in the right point and to increase, okay, service, okay? Rather than put the money in the bank, you have a twenty-six point five percent reserve, we only need fifteen percent. And the money in the bank, it doesn't even give you interest. Okay, so my point is, we need to increase and make sure our, okay, and bring more business. Because if the city safer, okay, nicer, then more people will come to our city, okay? And that's why I want to, okay, based on your revenue projection, and I give you my point of view of revenue projection, I'm more optimistic, I see, okay, what today, I think he's smiling because I'm, okay, meaning, we all should be very happy that hopefully we can get over this pandemic and we have people back to their life and the business can come back. Now they open, the restaurants open, okay? And hopefully, they have a good business, including the indoor, outdoor, okay? And for that, so that's my point. My point is, okay, your expenditure is right there, but on your revenue, you in the two thousand and twenty last year during the pandemic. And then, of course, your calculation, you cannot, you don't know when governor or when this vaccine will work. So you have to go to very conservative, okay? But now look like much brighter, so meaning, I think we are doing pretty good based on the budget. Okay, I am at time, thank you.
Are there council questions?
I do have a comment that I'd like to bring up based on pursuant to the increase in violent crime and increase in homelessness, graffiti, break-ins, all the bad stuff that's been going on in our community. And also based on the comments that were, some of the comments that were mentioned at the town hall, I want to request that we add ten police officers to our budget to bring us back to pre-pandemic levels. That's my one comment.
Councilmember Spotsby?
Yeah, I actually, since we are opening up the sports complex on July third and we're taking rentals, it wasn't part of the budget, but when should we expect, you know, staffing, yearly maintenance cost, the expenditure side of the sports complex, and also fee schedule for renting out use, things like that, what kind of revenue we expect to be receiving? Because, I mean, I understand what, you know, my colleagues are saying about things opening up, maybe more revenue, more revenue coming in. But we, the sports complex is something that is going to be an expenditure. And so do we have a timeline on that?
Through the chair. I know that a lot of work is going into the sportsplex, capital repairs and operational expenditures budget. It's going to take some time to get that into focus because the extent of the dilapidation was, I think, more severe than any of us thought. I think we had a very bad landlord-tenant relationship there. Cite a couple of specific examples. The life safety fire protection system had completely been non-functioning. So authorized an immediate repair of that, some thirty thousand dollars or so, because we can't have occupancy in the building unless there's a fire watch absent that repair. But the same applied to every single aspect out there. It was just not right. Landscaping deteriorated, restrooms deteriorated, painting, roofing, et cetera, et cetera. And that work is being developed now by our community services staff, the capital budget and the operational budget. So I would think you'll have it within the next month or so. It's been a lot of work going into it, but I want to make sure that's right before I bring it forward.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, I think we already approved, my understanding, currently, how much money we spent on that place. I think last time, we approved ten thousand dollars a month, okay, for merchant to clean up the place. And I was there, I see quite a lot of people over there cleaning up the place. I think the ballpark right now is ready. It's very, it's pretty and clean, okay, and but still have some detail they need to do it. And I think last time, you notified us, spent twenty-five thousand dollars to fix the alarm, something, okay, some, okay, alarm that sprinkled this and that water didn't go through. We don't even know, how can they operate at that time without this fire alarm and fire, okay, sprinklered and that is not safe at all. So I think you, this twenty-five thousand, so if we add twenty-five thousand plus two months, okay, one month, so twenty thousand, so we spend about, currently about forty-five thousand, am I right?
We, council did authorize us to proceed with merchants as an amendment to their contract, and they've made some good gain there against the condition of the landscaping in the field, et cetera.
I think sprinkler too, yeah.
Talking more about a holistic and comprehensive approach to what operational cost would be in addition to the repair cost. So I think we're probably still a month away from giving that set of numbers back to council.
Spotsby?
So at the last CSSA meeting, they did speak about the expected cost. And at that meeting, they suggested that it would actually be a couple of years before we actually, I guess, got out of the red. That they anticipated the first two years, we would be, our expenditures on the sports complex would be greater than the revenue, that it would take a couple of years for us to actually generate profit. Is that correct? Did I, is that what we're anticipating, that the first couple of years is going to be, the expenditures will be higher than revenues?
I think our intention through the chair is to scale it up as we begin to use it gradually, the revenues will come in gradually. I think our pro forma year is probably on the horizon. I don't know exactly when that would be. I didn't attend that meeting you're referring to, but I know that we're working to get those numbers together to get them to council.
Okay, and what I see the sportsplex is a goldmine for the city, okay? Because you have two restaurant and you sell beer and wine. And if we can get a contract before we get nothing and we owe in red and plus we have to pay the utility. And if we can have energy saving, okay, changing all the LED light, so we can save a lot of energy usage. And second thing, we are going to, I think you have recently our RFP for the restaurant, we already have some restaurant in the day, in some other ballpark interested. So hopefully, we can make sure, get a good contract, then give us fifty percent revenue. So that is right away, hundred percent go to the city, okay? And that can really, I think it's not going to a couple of years, I think instantly, okay, using all those income. And plus, I think we already, we see so many people want to book the place, okay? And hopefully, okay, we can have all those income to first sell sufficient, and second, to put in trust account, the extra revenue, and using that revenue to improve the place. Neglect place really obsolete, okay, basically obsolete, okay? Meaning, and they didn't do anything for twelve, thirteen years, didn't paint the place, didn't fix any broken glass, anything, everything just looked pretty, pretty bit up. So, and we, as an owner, we need to fix up, we own it. And the tenant, they don't care because they don't own it, so they just want to get the money and disappear. So since we own it, we need to make sure that place is prime and using all the ticket, using all the booking place to make sure, and first, our children can play over there first. So I think that's something important, so we, especially that indoor, the soccer field, I think that will generate a lot of interest for our, I saw a picture, some girl, soccer's already, soccer player already playing over there. I saw the picture, I say, I cannot happy enough to see kids already over there, you have a laughter, you have a coach. I think that's what we want, okay? We want service, we want, we taxpayer pay for that place and our children should play there ASAP. So I am pretty confident that place should be bringing a lot of revenue to the city and our city resident can use the amenity to enjoying and how it takes money.
Councilman Spotsby?
So in order to operate the facility, not the restaurant, are we anticipating having to hire more staff, security? Or are we, do we have the staffing currently in-house that would be running the day-to-day operations of the facility? Because I'm anticipating those hirings are going to come at a cost.
Through the chair. I'd just like to repeat, we don't have that ready for you tonight, but we're working on it. I know we did issue an RFP, we got a very solid proposal. I went and looked at this restaurant operation, they run one now in Pasadena, coincidentally, or maybe it's a positive coincidence, they're also running a ball field restaurant operation for a community out in the Antelope Valley. And we think that that revenue of the restaurants will be critical to the pro forma in the operating side. We also think if we can get the field shaped for tournament play, that that's going to be a really positive revenue. But our intention now is this will be a city-run facility. We're not talking about bringing in an outside third-party administrator, but rather having the city do it with our fine city staff.
Right.
I don't have it ready for you tonight. So we're talking about something that's a work in progress, but a lot of good gain is on it. On the expenditure side, we're looking at sports field lighting, we're looking at HVAC systems in the context of our larger contract with Alliance Energy, where we're revamping all of these measures, sports field lights and HVAC systems and all these things citywide. So we're trying to get to a higher standard immediately because there'll be an offsetting savings on the power bill, et cetera. So a lot of good things are happening there, I just don't have it ready to share with you tonight.
No, yeah, I understand. I guess my concern is, you know, before we add, you know, a million dollars to the budget, I'd really feel more comfortable, you know, seeing what the cost on the sports complex are going to be. And I believe, as the finance director said, we can always make budget adjustments as new numbers come in, revenues come in. And so I feel more comfortable being a little more conservative on this initial budget. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I actually have one thing. I know Mayor Potem mentioned adding police officers, which I would personally like to see that as well, but I don't want to neglect our code enforcement. And I just found out that we only have one part-time code enforcement for the whole entire city. And I'm actually glad that Mylan is here today. And watching, I guess, either the budget town hall or the finance audit, I saw a line item that said that in the police department, non-sworn employees to perform duties from police worn. And I feel that the code enforcement couldn't, could perform a lot of the duties that the police officers does so that we don't have to burden the police officers so that they can continue protecting our resident. But the day-to-day operation on code enforcement, making sure that the city's clean, beautiful, and not only held accountable just the residents, but for the city as well. So I know code enforcement goes around and, you know, graffiti check or whatever it may be, the cleanliness of the city, if it's our end or the residents. But if Mylan can come up, I just wanted to know how, I know we've had, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but how many part-time, and these were part-times, correct?
That's correct. So when I started with the city, it was the end of fiscal year nineteen twenty. So I came in halfway through the fiscal year, so I had a budget for three part-time employees. So since there's only half the year, I was able to use more bodies than the three to exhaust that budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty-one, I still had budgeted three part-time officers. The first half of the year, it was a little bit busier than expected, so we went through our funding a little bit faster. And I currently have one officer during the day covering the entire city. And then I have two people, that one person works on Saturday, one person works on Sunday to assist with activities that are happening during the weekend. The code enforcement division covers four quadrants of the city. And we follow the same reporting districts as the police department. So ideally, what we'd like to have, or what I like to have, is I'd like to have dedicated people to cover each of the four areas during the week and also have them cover those four areas on the weekend. What you're seeing is when we had more bodies out in the field, you saw neighborhoods that looked a little cleaner, lawns were maintained, less inoperable vehicles, less unpermitted vendors, less graffiti, things that my staff was able to identify and work with immediately instead of having to wait till Monday morning when the one person absorbs, you know, the sixty complaints that have come in over the weekend. It's nice to have people out there during the week, on the weekend, and available to respond when things are happening. One of the things you see in this city and other cities that I've worked is that a lot of things that happen on the weekend that affect during the week. During the weekends, we catch a lot of people that are doing work without permits, we have a lot of unpermitted vendors, we have a lot of things that go neglected and have to wait till during the week. My staff, when they're working the weekends and even during the week, you know, through the Go Request app, they drive around the city, they're able to patrol and proactively survey every street in the city. When we're staffed, they can identify the potholes, the curbs that need to be repaired, the graffiti, the tree branch that's blocking the stop sign, all the little things that impact the quality of life for this community, but we don't have to wait for somebody to call it in. A lot of times, I'll be in on a Monday or Tuesday and someone will call in and say, hey, this has been this way for two weeks. Well, when you only have one person driving the city, it's hard to cover from Nogales to the border of Baldwin Park with one person to cover every little side street. With a staff of officers, we had a systematic survey where we would drive every single street in the city every month to make sure we didn't have stuff that sat out there for a long time. Obviously, some of your major thoroughfares get more patrol than others, but the idea with the code enforcement is to interweave all the residential streets and absorb and take in and improve the quality of life for all parts of the community and not just your main streets.
Okay, thank you. And how many total part-time do you need? Because I know you said we're going to, similar to four quadrants that the police oversees, correct?
That's correct. So ideally, what you'd like to have, if we're staying with the part-time employee module, you'd like to have ten part-time officers, assign two officers to each quadrant of the city, which is sufficient for this city right now. And then also have some bodies dedicated to not only working the weekends, but now starting to focal, focus on some of the commercial properties in the city, some commercial property maintenance. Because without people dedicated to work commercial type enforcement, those areas become neglected. Obviously, people, when they do their window surveys, they're driving down, up, down their residential streets, and they're calling in what they see. But when you're trying to attract new business and better quality tenants, both residential and commercial, you got to take a look at some of your main shopping centers. And when you, if you see a dilapidated shopping center, and that's what you see when you come into the city, it gives a bad impression. So I would want to have a couple of staff dedicated to improving the aesthetics. So, I would want to have a couple of staff dedicated to improving the aesthetics and the appearance of our commercial properties as well, and not just the residential. We'd like to go border to border, um, giving each quadrant a dedicated service team that aligns with the Police Department's service area. In addition, uh, we just got it, I set it up and just got it in the system today, is with all of our code enforcement cases now, it's now going to plot if it's Area One, Two, Three, or Four. So, with that data, I'll be able to see that certain quadrants of the city may need additional resources, we'll be able to see residential and commercial cases, um, and as we get into the first quarter, the second quarter, maybe redeploy and shift resources, so the whole city is balanced as far as the aesthetics.
I forgot about the commercial, because I, I do remember, uh, thinking Councilwoman Diaz's district, the Hooters, people think the city's not doing anything, but on your end, you were sending letters, you were, uh, making sure that they are, they fixed it up, at, because it was getting...
Yeah, and what people don't realize is just, you can take that one case, for example, and we're dealing not only with property owners, we're dealing with tenants, we're dealing with utility companies, multiple utility companies, developers, AQMD, building and safety, planning, it's a big process, and with no staff to assist with those type cases, obviously, I'm the one that's handling those now, and I don't have the people to delegate to work those. But like, um, Restaurant Row in that area, you'd want to have a person dedicated to that, so when you're coming in off the Ten Freeway from LA, or coming from Ontario, when you hit West Covina, you see this bright, beautiful, clean area. You don't want to see dilapidated, you don't want to see graffiti, because your first impression driving down a ten is, am I going to stop and eat here, or do I want to get off on this exit? Oh, no, it looks bad. So, we want people, when they come into the city, through the main corridors, to see a bright, vibrant city.
Um, code enforcement does do a lot, some things that I didn't know, but you, thank you for letting us know all the things that you do, that people don't realize, but I do want to make sure that you have the staffing to help that. But I personally would like to request, uh, ten part-time staff to assist with this, and possibly even join with a police officer to help offset their, um, part. Um, and a lot of people don't realize it, because I, you do, in regards to like permits and stuff, there's, um, code enforcement does generate revenue, but not like directly, because it goes to the permits and everything else, so, but that's like indirect cost that nobody really utilizes.
Yeah, I, I can give you an example, we've got one property that, I won't give the address, but it's, it's off of AMAR, and we were, went out there because we received a complaint of someone possibly doing work without a permit. Well, we go out, we inspect the property, not only are they adding onto the house, they're doing an ADU, they're doing a retaining wall, they're working on their swimming pool. So indirectly, well, the revenue shows up in other departments, you know, the permit fees that were generated just from our stop-work notice was about four thousand dollars. So you got a part-timer out there that spends a half hour writing a stop-work notice and issuing the notice, it generates, you know, four thousand dollars in permit fee. And you, you multiply that times the number of property and notices, um, that we issue, um, again, the program becomes better than cost-neutral, in worst case, it's cost-neutral. So whatever the part-time salaries are, they're going to recoup that through either administrative citations or permit revenue.
Thank you.
Okay, back, back, uh, mayor regarding the, okay, okay, indirectly, you bring the revenue, because just based on the state of the city, with the number coming from the building and the safety, okay, they just compare last year and previous year, two thousand nineteen and twenty, uh, twenty twenty, basically, two thousand nineteen, our application for building and safety to pull permit, okay, it's only about three thousand, okay, and the, but, okay, on the last year, due to your staff, you have about six staff that time, okay, it's for six months, we have more than four thousand. So meaning, that's the highest for a long time, so one thousand additional, okay, and permit, and now they let, then, for people have a violation, you give them warning and fine, so, so with that, it's another revenue, okay, for the people do not, okay, comply. So I think that all generate enough of income to just justify, okay, and to have a staff to really, to clean up the city. And our city, if you see Restaurant Row, okay, that, you can see the side yard, okay, sidewalk, the curb is filthy, and the Barranca Bridge is unbelievable, it's unpresentable, okay, and this supposedly are one of our high-end area of, of those high-rise and plus Eastland Mall. So that need to be cleaned up, okay, and with your staff driving around, and, uh, Go Request, and have our staff, okay, to, to make sure, okay, and, uh, clean up the city, and the graffiti, the park, the trash, and then those people have to driving around and reported or help out. And I think that's the thing, you go ahead.
One of the other things that, you know, with sufficient staffing is within each quadrant of the city, the four reporting areas, those code enforcement officers can also serve essentially as a park patrol, um, driving through the city parks, identifying, um, safety concerns, identifying graffiti, so we can report that immediately to the maintenance or, or Public Works, or whoever needs to address it, be, before it becomes a, a problem. Uh, with graffiti and other type nuisance issues, the longer it stays up, the bigger attraction is for people to put up more. If people see stuff come down, or they don't see it at all, they're less likely to repeat. Um, I, I've been in the business for thirty-five years, and I can tell you, if you allow graffiti and weeds and trash to sit, it's only going to get worse. You need to address it.
How, how many staff you have in La Puente, when you are the manager over there as a code enforcement?
Um, I, when I left, I had twenty-four part-time officers.
Twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, currently, you only have one?
Yes.
Only micro, and we are much bigger city than La Puente.
We are seventeen square miles.
City manager, what happened?
It's careful budget management, I think. No wonder our city look filthy.
Councilwoman Diaz had a question?
Well, I just want to say thank you, because I know how hard your job is, and, um, just finding out that we only have one person on the weekend, um, working on this graffiti, trying to control that, and I just really, I want to tell you thank you, and I appreciate everything you do, because I know you respond like that. Thank you.
Uh, I, I guess a, a concern I do have is, you know, according to the, the state audit, uh, one of the things that we, we were, uh, definitely, um, hit was with, uh, evaluating both short-term and long-term financial implications of significant spending decisions. Um, you know, the discussion of, of hiring, you know, um, twenty, twenty-five more personnel, seems like a very significant decision. Would this meet our financial recovery plan that we, we sent to the state auditors?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask our Finance Director to help with this answer. I'd like to just give some context as she collects her thoughts there. I, I want to repeat for emphasis that the, the revenues in this proposed budget are conservatively estimated, and we, we appreciate, um, Stephanie and Robyn's caution, that they're, they're doing a good job for us, and I think their projections last year were within one percent of what they said they were going to be, that's, that's good budgeting. I think the point I'd like to make regarding the fiscal impact is, I understand the need for these things, but I'd just like to make sure that we all continue to be aware that absent additional revenue, some of these additional expenditures may not be sustainable, we're going to have to watch very carefully as we go. I don't have, obviously, a report to give you about these things that you're discussing in this moment, but I think we need to be, um, good diligent budget monitors, expenditures to revenue, um, our, our audit committees getting the reports, I think they're getting them monthly now, but the council as a board has a, a role in that area, too.
Well, I know when we gave the second half of presentation, uh, of the nineteen million that we'll be receiving, one million will go into job creation, so in creating part-time, you know, opportunities for, you know, residents' priority here, to, uh, be hired part-time through this, it's job creation, and it's, you know, serving the purpose of the city, is that a possibility? Because I don't, they don't utilize, uh, for ten part-time?
It, it certainly could be, there's, there's some categories of opportunity within those federal monies, where we could directly attribute, um, lost revenues to, to the federal money. Um, regarding the job creation, one of the thoughts we'd had, and it's not a program that's been developed or presented to council yet, was that we could use those monies, that million dollars, to partner with community-based organizations who do job training, I'm thinking the, um, Conservation Corps team, they've helped other cities in the San Gabriel Valley with planting of their medians. So if we brought them in and had a partnership arranged, where we were using the federal money to do drought-tolerant landscaping of the medians, we might help make those pop, because I know it's a desire of the council, and the dirt medians would be very expensive to irrigate, but if we did drought-tolerant, that might be a way to help us get there in the, in the federal money. I've never seen the equal of this, it's an opportunity for us to, to be judicious and to make some of those things happen.
The, uh, county presented that their ages fourteen to twenty-four, that they have, um, job opportunities, is City of West Covina part of that? Because in LA, I utilize that, and we have staff that works at our center, whether it's temporary for the summer or anything, but is West Covina part of that, um, program?
We, we haven't explored that yet, but perhaps we could be.
Please, okay. Any questions? Councilwoman Diaz?
Not for Mylan, but I want to bring something up.
Something, okay, thank you, Mylan, appreciate it.
Um, well, what I want to bring up is, uh, exactly with, uh, Mr. Councilman Tabatabai, about the maintenance at the Sportsplex. And, um, I understand that we need maintenance of the, the Sportsplex, um, and that's why I want to propose that we hire the twenty-two that we laid off. Back in two thousand eighteen, um, but the three councilmen that approved this budget to lay off these twenty-two maintenance workers, that, um, I think we should bring them back. I think our, our bathrooms at these parks are, are filthy, um, nobody's picking up the needles, as, as some people have been saying, that, uh, there's nobody maintaining our, our, um, parks. And I understand that we can use restricted funds for this, is that true?
Um, through the chair, yes, it is possible for our public service maintenance workers, that we could assign, um, a goodly portion of that to restricted funds. If I hear you correctly, so far, I'm taking careful notes, I heard ten police officers, ten part-time code enforcement officers, and did I hear you say ten maintenance workers?
No, I didn't, and I said twenty-two, but if I get ten, I'd be happy. I'm only saying it because of the twenty-two that were laid off.
I understand.
I just want to bring us back to where we are at.
Can I, can I add on?
Yeah, but, um, and I understand, we, we don't want to impact the general fund, uh, that's why, these are the options that I would like to request the city to look at, um, but that, that's, uh, or changes that's needed.
I want to, okay, um, says, okay, because I was there, two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, okay, approved by James Thomas, Corey Woschow, and Lori Johnson, approve, okay, the budget of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, that's how our budget down to about nine million dollars, and they, in that, two thousand eighteen, August, I think, second, the special meeting approved, lay off twenty-two, okay, our public worker, and then later on, they, they, they laid these twenty-two people, I, I myself against, my expense against, so it's a three-two, approved the budget, and they have a twenty-two public worker come in and begging for their jobs. Okay, and then, they, they got laid off, and that later on, I find out, we only saved about hundred fifty thousand dollars or less on the general fund, most of them are from restricted fund. So that is really, and later on, they even give the middle management five to twenty percent raise. So this is uncalled for, for that time, okay, they're doing their thing, and look at the street right now, look at the park right now, okay, and, and, and this, most of them are from sewer fund, from, okay, and the major aid fund, and, okay, and our guest tax to pay for all this worker, and then they're the bottom fish. Okay, and then now, look our city, and then look at our curb, look at our median, okay, that is really, really not presentable as a West Covina. A lot of residents complaining about West Covina, why it look like this, because we don't have enough staff, and the spare management, they have twenty-two worker, okay, and, so I, I, I would support, okay, at least get ten from the restricted fund, it's not going to hit the general fund, okay, and at least bring back the service, because when you see what we are out of pandemic, and currently our situation, I think we need to improve the service, not just trying, I think the reform and the rebuild, okay, and the last years, what we are doing, our reserve up to the eighty million dollars, twenty-six point five percent, more than fifteen percent, and what the resident want is safety, what resident want is clean city, what the city want is a proud city they can live in, so in, other than that, why we pay taxes? Okay, and, uh, so, so I think so, because this, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah.
The only thing I want to say is that I, I got an email today from a resident, very upset that Cameron Park is dirty, it's really bad, and I guess they have these tournament games, and they leave it a mess, and so they're complaining, and they want their parks clean, and we need to do that. We got to be, the other thing is, I would invite the community to at least help out, you know, if you see trash, why not pick it up? I do, when I go walking, I pick up trash. I mean, there's been plenty of times when I see these huge bags on Lark Allen, and I just pick them up, take them to my own trash can. We have to work together, because it's true, the city needs more safety, code enforcement, and maintenance, we need it all, and we're trying here, we're trying to make our city better, and safer, and cleaner, and working here.
So, there, there was an item that, that you actually pulled tonight, and so it's kind of concerning, so when we are making these staffing decisions and needs assessments for operations, um, what, what are the resources that we're using, uh, to inform, uh, decision-making? Uh, again, I know we were, we, we had an, an item, uh, about looking at, uh, our staffing and our departments, and, and we, we actually pulled that, so, so what are we using to decide how much staff to have in different departments, code enforcement, things like that?
Well, we have, um, through the chair, we have a, um, a table of organization, a classification compensation plan in place now. It hasn't been reviewed comprehensively, um, in this century, I believe, and so I think that, uh, legitimate need, I think, um, that particular item was, that I pulled off the agenda, I asked be returned to staff, maybe I need to do some more work on it and bring that back at some point. Um, for now, we would be following the existing, uh, staffing arrangements and classifications that we have. So it might help us if we could have some council consensus around what it is you're trying to do tonight, if I'm hearing correctly, I heard ten, ten, and...
Okay.
But this is kind of your, your portion of the meeting to give us some direction as to where you're trying to get this budget tonight, I'd like to get it adopted tonight if we could.
Okay, I think, okay, since...
Three tens?
Can, can we, can we have a police chief to see if you give him ten, or he can deal with ten?
Absolutely.
Because if we give him ten, it's not enough or not enough, if you're not enough, we'll give you twenty. Still not enough, we'll give you thirty.
But, um, if the budget will allow for any additional police officers, it would, it would serve the city well. We are way understaffed, I think we've had numerous complaints about, uh, you know, visibility with officers, um, we don't have those teams that we can put out and address some of these quality-of-life issues. So I, I mean, if, if I had ten officers, let's say if that is the number, um, obviously, I would, I would probably address our, our, our overlap shift, where we can get some additional officers right out in the middle of the day, and they stay a little bit later into the night. That has helped us in the past, we haven't had that for a few years, uh, that will give us more visibility, uh, that will increase our response times, which is important, um, and, you know, we can address more than just one or two major incidents. The other thing I would like to do is, uh, take some of those members and create a street team, so, um, I think all of us will agree that we've seen a huge increase in graffiti. This isn't the first time that we've seen this, uh, the last time was, uh, quite a few years ago, but we developed a graffiti team called GAD at the time, uh, we addressed that issue, and we just about eliminated graffiti altogether with several hundred arrests. Of course, now with the DA's office, I don't know where those arrests would go, but the point is, is that we addressed that issue. So having a street team to not only address like graffiti issues, burglary issues, Cadillac converter issues, some of these things is imperative, because when you have just a patrol officer that patrols... Because when you have just a patrol officer that patrols a beat, he gets, you know, probably, I don't know, 20, 30, 40 calls a day. With that comes three, four, five reports. There has to be time to write them. So when we get a citizen that calls in and says, hey, I see this drug incidents, or I see this, we may not have the time to go address it. And of course, our residents get upset because they want that immediate response. So, yeah, we are short officers. I would love to have some more. And if the budget would allow it, I would be all for it.
Sounds good, yeah. Bringing back the overlap shift and addressing those special concerns with catalytic converters, graffiti, and everything else that comes up.
Yes. Can I say something? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mia. Okay, just like, I think we've been talking about, because before the pandemic, our budget is what, 99 police officers before, right? 98 or 99?
We're at 90 right now.
I know, I know, but before the pandemic, I remember...
It was 90, 99.
99, right? I think 99. So before the pandemic, 2019 is 99, but 2020, we hit the pandemic. So we cut 10. So we go to 90, and then you can see, we have no cover of this police. So right now, we go back to the pre-pandemic, 2019-99. Speaking to, we only have one. Okay? So based on that, okay, and hopefully, okay, this 10 or 20, we're talking 10, right?
10.
10, okay, not 20, okay. So 10, I think that can really help the staff, help our police officer reduce a lot of stress with more coverage, right? More of a patrol. And the most important thing is, we want to hire is the person patrol the street, not the manager sitting in the office.
Yeah, I understand. The teams that I'm talking about are all patrol level.
Patrol level?
Yeah.
Because that's what we lack of right now. A lot of people complaining about they barely can see the patrol car in their neighborhood, especially some of the areas, kind of county, or in the north. Okay? So a lot of coverage is really not feasible to see our patrol car. And the traffic, traffic, traffic police is lack of, and the people zoom through our city like 80 mile per hour on the residential.
Well, that's just another issue. We need more motors out there. There was a time where we had eight. And I can remember people feared going through West Covina because we were out there.
Yes, I get pulled over a couple of times.
But now you're talking about adding another 10. You know, we have some areas to address. It's not just those patrol units. At one point, when we had the numbers, we were able to do a lot more.
So with this 10?
The fact is, is we don't right now, so 10...
Could you increase maybe at least one into the traffic, okay? And to pull people, to slow down the traffic, or to make sure people know we have motorcycle, okay? And to slow down the traffic and to keep, okay, people, motor is safe.
Yeah, there's a number of combinations we can use them. If you want to put a couple in motors, we could do that. Take a couple away from a street team. There's a number of combinations we can do. But either way, no matter how we use them, it's going to help our citizens, it's going to help our city.
So we can see the big difference. So with this 10, we can see a big difference. And you basically hire the P1, P2, because we know, okay, LA County share layoffs some due to the defund the police and LA City. So maybe can get some P1, P2, okay, and recruit them?
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, we cast out, we get what we get. We try to take the best people that we can. We want to make sure that whoever we do bring into the city is going to represent the city the entire time they here, not get into some kind of trouble. So that's a whole process in itself, you know, but...
The reason why I'm talking about that, because only the police, that is a hard cost. That would be a hard cost of about $1.2 million, okay, about this 10 police officer, including their salary, including overtime, including their equipment. So we're talking about possible 1% if you are P1, P2, it's about $100,000 a piece, okay? And if time 10, so it's a million dollar plus $200,000, up and down, so $1.2 million passes is the hard cost. And the co-enforcement, it pay for itself, because they bring in the revenue. And then the public work basically is a restricted fund. It's come from our sewer tax, okay, all this grant, okay, and to pay for all this salary. Only the police is our hard cost. But the police is a necessity that right now, we just cannot have enough, especially crime rate going up so high and a lot of issue going on around all the places. And the game issue, drive-by shooting, we just have one on the south side, drive-by shooting.
Yeah. I think the police will cost a little bit more than a million, but they're police and it's public safety. And we obviously need to have the right amount out there, and that's what we're talking about today.
Okay, thank you, chief.
So councilman, what would you like to do in regards? I mean, we are talking about the budget. I mean, obviously, mine and others can go unrestricted funds and other funds that doesn't hit the general fund.
I want to move the motion to approve...
The current budget the way it is.
No, current budget plus, okay, improve the service, okay, with all this, okay, under three category to, okay, in, make sure our city safe. I think this is, cannot be compromised, especially right now. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure everyone understands, we can balance this budget tonight in one fell swoop of the pen by the 2.3 million that we're in a deficit, authorizing us to use part of those recovery act funds for that. The cost of the 10 police officers, 10 code, part-time code enforcement, and 10 maintenance workers, the cost of that is going to be about $2.6 million. So then that will go back into the reserves again unless the revenues come in a lot higher than what's projected. Because now we'll be talking about almost $5 million.
Okay, question. How can it be $2.6 million? If you have used a restricted fund, my calculation is 1.2, no more than 1.5.
So the maintenance workers are about 580,000. And those can come out of, almost entirely out of restrictive funds. What I do want to make sure you know, the 22 is not feasible. At the time we laid off those 22 workers, you got to remember, we were not delivering any capital projects. We have now dedicated a lot of that money to go to CIP. So if we hire workers, we're either going to have to give up the CIP, you know, and a lot of that for parks, you cannot use gas tax, you can't use Measure R. So there's limited restrictive funds that we'll be able to use. I'm not saying we can't do it. It's the council's choice. I just want to make sure.
Can we do this? Can we, based on the restricted fund, because we don't want to make a dent too much to, even, we are very, I am very optimistic about our income. But at the same time, we want to be conservative, do not, just because we look good, we spend the money, but we need to improve our service. So my point is this, can we, can we use, okay, subject to use the restricted fund to hire 10?
Mm-hmm.
Make sense?
Yes. I think that's doable. I don't think the 22 is... I'm fine with 10.
Subject to use the...
But I mean, why not ask for 22?
Yeah, no, no, 10 available restricted funds.
But if you give me 10, I'm happy.
So you're not going to touch the general fund, use the restricted fund. So we are, okay, council, okay, the motion is, we are going to add 10, okay, and use the restricted fund to hire those staff. And regarding the part-time, 10 of them, how much your calculation for 10?
For 10 is 390,000.
$390,000, it would be easily paid by itself?
Yes.
So that one, I don't care, okay? That one should be fine.
And then the police officers is about 1.6 million.
It's about right, because my calculation...
And I think, there's going to be some up and down with that. I think, I don't know if the police chief is still here or not, but there'll be some people leaving as we hire people. It's going to be hard to hire 10 officers in a year.
Impossible. Because if we don't do this 10, we in trouble, because we have so many people retiring.
Correct.
Okay? And we are going to down to 80 or 70. That would be even worse. So right now, we have to prepare for, because they have a 350. So meaning, 50 years old, they retire. And we have quite a few of them, okay, that are retiring. So really need to kind of bring this number up starting right now.
And these are all based on entry-level officers, these costs that I gave you, is entry-level at the bottom step of the range, so meaning it could be 12 months to 18 months to get them fully operational. We're not going to see any savings right now.
Understand, but at least we need to start with some place.
I understand.
Otherwise, we would be always higher, lateral.
We have a city manager who wanted to say something.
Just wanted to contribute one thought to this conversation about the police officer hires. You've given us pretty clear direction to be as aggressive as we can be about pursuing state and federal grants and aid. So I would like to look into that a little bit and return to you if we're able to identify justice assistance grants or COPs programs that might help us fund some of this, at least in the initial years. They never pay for it all, but maybe we could crosswalk some of it into the first two fiscal years that would help soften the general funding impact. We'll just intend to return some of that as well.
Okay, I'm going to move the approval, okay, on the, okay, public worker will be subject to the restricted fund to hire 10 minimum, if we have enough fund to do it. And then we will approve for 10 part-time, okay, of a co-enforcement, and we're going to hire 10, okay, entry-level police or police officer, subject to, okay, and description of our chief. So that's my motion.
One second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Mayor Protim Castellanos, with the amendments of 10 part-time code officers, 10 police officers, 10 maintenance workers paid out of restricted funds.
Subject, yes.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Before I vote, I just wanted to make one comment. Earlier tonight, we had a long discussion about a quarter of a million dollars for Station 4. In January, when that $1.6 million item came up, I voted no because we did not evaluate the short and long-term financial implication. And so then tonight, when that spending that we already approved came up, all of a sudden, we were concerned about that quarter of a million dollars. So again, the idea from the state audit was that we really were thoughtful about our spending. The fact that we're going to approve a budget doesn't mean that as revenues come in, we can't make amendments later, we can't make hires later, we can't find grants to hire more police. It doesn't have to be done here on the dice, it could be more thoughtful. And again, it's a concern that we are continuing the behavior that the state audit warned against. So my vote is no.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Onto Agenda Item 18. I have a letter, that's actually, that was from my request. And so I just wanted to say thank you for the demand letter that I was asking, you know, crime is crime. We've seen increase of crimes, graffiti theft, which majority are considered misdemeanors and are just dismissed. After our last meeting, Gascón's office reached out to us. And so I was actually happy to hear that now they want to look at our 154 cases that wasn't filed, charges weren't filed by their office. So I'm happy to see that, but I'm looking forward to see exactly what's going to happen. But also, because of our last meeting, it opened the eyes of other cities, which I actually am happy for that, that other cities are now looking into their own, how many cases in their own city that wasn't filed? Because a lot of people didn't even realize that. So I'm happy to know, I'm happy to know that this opened the eyes of other cities to see how badly it's become. So, and then, and yeah, I know some cities mentioned that they're going to bring it to Gascón's office too, to see if they'll look into that. Victims' cases were dismissed, and so I just want justice for our community. And this demand letter is exactly the issues that a lot of us in the community have, especially their, you know, the special directives that I am so against. So I'm glad to see this here. I'd like to have this approved, sent off, and I'd like to get, well, I want another feedback. And it doesn't mean, you know, I know some residents think, oh, vote no confidence, doesn't mean that I'm not going to vote in the future. But I want to see what action so that I can show the residents what they're doing or not doing. And it's proven that we want, we're demanding, we're demanding justice, we're demanding, we're pretty much saying his directives suck, pretty much, and that's, so that's it.
Okay, move the motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Let's see, city, council, oh, no, city council request. Did, oh, let me see, no, that's not that. Actually, any AB 123 conference or meetings, any of the council? No? City council request?
I actually have one. Today, it was extremely hot. I know we had a cooling center. And this is more for seniors or residents who don't have AC at their home. And I was disappointed to know that there was zero people that utilize it. But I understand when you're targeting seniors, they're not on social media. So I'd like to request, and this is through IT, and we're going to have to test IT to see how good they are this time, but I'd like to request that we develop a photo number list that has an automatic, so it doesn't utilize staff's time, an automatic info by text, so that they can text, you know, the seniors and let them know of this information, or one of those robo-calls to let them know that this is happening, especially for this. Yes.
Mayor, I want to conclude what you're saying, because we have a database, okay? Okay, we deliver 550 of them to home, a phone number, code it up. Because most of the homeowner, okay, the fixed income, the senior, living in the older old home, although, although the old home basically have no air conditioning, no insulation. The reason I know, because in 1989, moving my first home, it built in 1950, as a no air conditioning, no insulation, the summertime is hot like hell, okay, and like oven. So I understand that it would be very inhuman for all the senior, okay, to live in that condition. So we need to just code it up, okay? I think we have that 550, just code it up, say, hey, you got need help? If they cannot dry, we send Uber, Lyft, or GoWest to pick them up and go to the cooling center, at least it's safer for them. And tomorrow will be more than 100 degrees, so possible, we can code it up, say, hey, you got need help, this and that.
My concern is I don't want to waste city's time to make those phone calls. Believe me, when they make those phone calls, you can waste an hour or more, especially 500. And if they want to chit chat, it's going to go a long time. But that's why I want us to, technology's there, and I want to have IT prove themselves. The cost of it is not that much. I mean, I don't know, well, that's, well, that's why I'm putting the request, so you can bring it back and see how much it costs. I'm pretty sure maybe less than 100 a year or something for an app, that they can just type it up, send it out. And this could be also used for any important messages within our city, so it just doesn't end there. But I'd like to see that implemented in our city.
And I agree with the mayor regarding this possible for the future, but for this couple day, maybe tomorrow, can let our, okay, and the community service, senior community service staff to kind of locate, they know their people, they delivered a few, they know what kind of condition that they've been, okay? Quite a few of them, I can guarantee it's no air conditioning, and I think our staff know them very well. I know Susie Perez, no area of them. So maybe can call a couple of them, have them to see, do they need help? At least we, as a city, we concerned about their well-being. And if we have a facility, we doing that for them, and they don't know, and they wasted. And I think maybe we should do something at least for tomorrow and this week. This week is the hardest, but this maybe will come out more often, be July coming out, August, it will be hot like hell.
Anybody against the request?
Sounds great.
No? Okay. Great idea. Any other questions, concerns? No? This concludes our meeting. 11 o'clock. Thank you. Have a good night.